Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Councilmember Crystal Hudson, Chair of the Committee on Aging. My pronouns are she/her. Welcome to today's joint oversight hearing with the Committee on Mental Health, Disabilities, and Addiction on Mental Health and Older New Yorkers. Thank you to Chair Lynda Lee for co-hosting this important hearing. We will also consider the following legislation. Introduction Number 1257, sponsored by myself, requiring the Cabinet for Older New Yorkers to study and report on the provision of agency services to older adults with certain neurological and mental health conditions. Proposed Resolution Number 106A, also sponsored by myself, calling on the New York State Legislature to pass, and the Governor to sign Assembly Bill 2367, Senate Bill 3563, which would expand eligibility for the Disability Rent Increase Exemption Program to additional qualifying household members. Resolution Number 736, sponsored by Councilmember Tiffany Caban, calling on the New York State Legislature to introduce and pass, and the Governor to sign, legislation to increase funding for assertive community treatment teams. And Resolution 852, sponsored by Councilmember Shaker Krishnan, calling on the United States Congress and the President of the United States to take steps to protect Social Security. Older New Yorkers currently account for 16.2% of the city's population, and by 2040, NYC Aging projects that this will grow to 20.6%. That's roughly 1.6 million people. As we strive to ensure that our city's older adults age in place with dignity, addressing their mental health needs and properly supporting those living with neurological conditions must be a priority. According to the Mayor's Office of Community Mental Health, older adults experience higher rates of late-onset mental health disorders like anxiety and depression, as well as higher rates of neurological conditions such as Parkinson's disease, mild cognitive impairment, and dementia. These conditions often present with atypical symptoms, making them more likely to be misdiagnosed or overlooked by providers not trained in geriatric care. For example, depression among older adults can manifest as fatigue, sleep disturbances, or physical complaints, symptoms often mistaken for normal aging or chronic physical illness. Assortive of geriatric-trained providers in New York City exacerbates these issues. Older adults also face unique barriers in accessing mental health care, including stigma and coexisting health conditions such as hearing or vision loss that complicate assessments. Differentiating mental health systems from neurological conditions can be difficult, particularly among underserved and immigrant older adults, who may be less likely to report mental health concerns. That is why routine and culturally responsive mental health screenings in community and clinical settings are essential. At today's hearing, we'll assess how effectively the city is connecting older adults to these screenings and providing appropriate, accessible, and linguistically tailored services. We will also examine NYC Aging's Geriatric Mental Health Initiative, a community-based program designed to address older adults' mental health needs at older adult centers, or OACs. Through this initiative, licensed mental health clinicians conduct screenings, provide counseling, and offer activities that raise awareness about mental health symptoms and available support. I look forward to hearing from NYC Aging about how this program and related initiatives like Protect and Clinical Services, TeleProtect and Mental Health Support Services at NORC's are working to reduce stigma, increase access, and connect older New Yorkers to treatment. Today's oversight topic holds deep personal significance for me. After nearly a decade serving as my mother's primary caregiver while she lived with Alzheimer's disease, I began advocating for older adults, which ultimately led me to the City Council. I'm proud of the work this committee and the council have accomplished together with advocates and providers, championing the needs of older New Yorkers and tackling the city's mental health crisis with evidence-based solutions. Sorry. Excuse me. Thank you. My legislation, Introduction 1257, continues these efforts by requiring DOHMH to identify the 10 most common neurological conditions. Thank you. It's always great when you can co-chair a committee with a thoughtful and compassionate colleague. My legislation, Introduction 1257, continues these efforts by requiring DOHMH to identify the 10 most common neurological conditions and the 10 most common mental health conditions affecting older New Yorkers. Following this study, the Cabinet for Older New Yorkers would consider DOHMH's findings and recommended actions that city agencies will take to improve services for older adults living with the identified mental health and neurological conditions. Our city agencies should set the example for how to holistically support our city's most vulnerable older adults, and my legislation would assist them in doing so. I look forward to the administration's feedback on this proposal, as well as a broader discussion on how we can meet this moment to deliver assistance for a rapidly aging city with growing mental health needs. Finally, I want to highlight my resolution, Proposed Resolution 106A, which calls on the state to expand eligibility for the Disability Rent Increase Exemption, or DRE. DRE helps eligible individuals living with disabilities remain in affordable housing by freezing their rent at the current level and exempting them from future rent increases. Unfortunately, state law sets extremely strict eligibility requirements for DRE. To qualify, the individual living with a disability must be the head of household. This requirement excludes an estimated 7,400 households where a family member has a disability but is not the head of household. There's no good reason for this distinction. At a time when our city faces a massive housing crisis, the legislature must pass A 2367, sponsored by Assemblymember Harvey Epstein, and S 3563, sponsored by Senator Cordell Clear, to cut this red tape and help families stay in their homes. Thank you to the committee staff, Christopher Pepe, Chloe Rivera, and Simil Hamid for their work on today's hearing. I'd also like to thank my staff, Andrew Wright, Elica Ruintan, and Omar Richardson. I'll now turn it over to Chair Lee for her opening remarks. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for joining us today, those who are here from our city agencies and partners, as well as advocates in the community. And of course, thank you to my awesome co-chair for this hearing, Crystal Hudson. And this is a topic that I'm really excited we're getting to do. And I know that with you and your mom and your personal story, that's like a really big driver of the work that you're doing in aging. And for me, also, raised by my grandmother, I'm pretty sure she actually suffered from depression, although she never got formally diagnosed, because there weren't a lot of places where she could go where she had the language accessibility for these services. And also, having run KCS in the past, where we had two senior centers, a Meals on Wheels program, Social Adult Day program, and then we also opened up an Article 31 mental health clinic. Having done that work in the community, there's a lot of barriers and challenges we're seeing, especially with our immigrant New Yorkers in New York City. And so, you know, we already know that stigma is a huge, huge problem. We have a huge shortage of trained professionals, and it's very difficult to find the folks that can actually address, you know, and properly diagnose a lot of these things that we're seeing. And a lot of times in our communities, we would see people come in where they would say, "Oh, I'm feeling this pain in my arm," or "a pain in my leg." But really, it was them physically manifesting their depression, anxiety, other mental health issues. And so, you know, how do we also work with medical professionals so that we make sure that the training is there and that they are aware to ask a lot of these questions in clinical settings? Because as we all know, and I'm sure our partners know very, very well, is that, you know, we should be treating the mental health piece just as importantly as the physical piece of someone's well-being. And this is something we're hoping to address with a lot of the hearing topics today that we're going to go over. And of course, as we all know, I'm preaching to the choir here, but social isolation and loneliness, if it's not addressed, it could manifest itself in other health risks and issues. And so, we really are trying to figure out how we can ensure routine mental health screenings, both in the community and in clinical settings. And we also need to invest, especially in the community groups that are providing these services. And really, you know, it's our job on the council definitely to ensure that this population, older adults, receive the mental and physical health care that they deserve and that they continue to live in dignity in the community. And so, we look forward to hearing today from the administration on all the work that you're doing, and thank you for being here and answering our questions and being partners with us. And just really quickly, he's not here. Okay. I want to read a statement, because we don't have quorum. So I'm going to read a statement from Councilmember Caban on her resolution that we're going to be hearing today. So let me just go ahead and take the time to read this. "Thank you, Chairs Lee and Hudson, and members of the committee. Today, I'm proud to be discussing Resolution 736, which calls upon the New York State Legislature to increase funding for assertive community treatment teams. ACT teams provide essential community-based care to individuals with serious mental illness by offering mobile services that include mental health and substance use treatment, peer support, and vocational education. These teams help people who need mental health services stay in their communities instead of being placed in more restrictive, costly hospital settings. Currently, ACT teams in the city are dealing with growing demand for their services, with city officials testifying at budget hearings this spring that close to 700 people are waitlisted for these teams. While the need for them is increasingly urgent, ACT teams remain underfunded and unable to fully meet the demand. As a result, many individuals are left without the support they need. With more people requiring access to these services, it is now more important than ever that the council takes the lead in advocating for greater funding to meet the growing need for ACT teams. In her State of the City address earlier this year, Speaker Adams called for expanding access to these teams. This resolution is a call to action to make sure that our city and state are providing effective, community-based care that has proven to reduce the burden on our overextended healthcare system. Expanding the funding for ACT teams will lead to better outcomes for individuals and our community as a whole, while also reducing the need for more costly inpatient care." Thank you. And I wholeheartedly agree with Councilmember Caban's statement. Okay. And just wanted to quickly also thank my staff and the committee staff for their work on this hearing, and I will now turn the mic back to Chair Hudson.
Thank you so much. And I believe we might be joined by Councilmember Krishnan a little bit later, so when he arrives, we'll allow him to deliver remarks as well. Before we move on, I'd like to acknowledge that we've been joined here by Councilmembers Lewis, Schulman, Marmarado, Abreu, Caban, and Botcher. I'll now turn it over to Committee Council to administer the oath to the representatives from the administration.
Thank you, Chairs. Good afternoon. If you could both please raise your right hand. In accordance with the rules of the council, I will administer the affirmation to the witnesses from the mayoral administration. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this committee, and to respond honestly to councilmembers' questions?
Yes.
You may proceed.
Good afternoon, Chairs Hudson, Chair Lee, members of the Aging and Mental Health and Disabilities and Addiction Committee. I'm Ryan Murray, the Executive Deputy Commissioner of the New York City Department for the Aging. I appreciate the opportunity to testify before you today about mental health in older New Yorkers. I want to acknowledge that I'm joined by my colleague from the New York City Department of Health and Mental Hygiene, Dr. Jean Wright, the Executive Deputy Commissioner for Mental Hygiene, who will be available to answer your questions as well. New York City Aging provides mental health services in local communities by placing licensed mental health clinicians at older adult centers in all five boroughs. To our knowledge, our model is unique, and no other area agency on aging in the country provides mental health supports in a direct capacity. New York City's population is aging rapidly. Today, nearly 2 million New Yorkers are age 60 or older, and that number is expected to increase in the next decade. The Aging Committee has also acknowledged this fact and taken opportunities to highlight the city's growing needs for caregiver services, information sharing, or resources, and of course, mental health options for older adults. As the population grows, so does the need to respond to mental health challenges, social isolation, and the complex web of services needed to help older adults age in place with dignity. Older adults are vulnerable to depression, anxiety, and cognitive decline, which can be exacerbated by isolation, financial insecurity, and limited access to culturally competent care. To support older adults holistically, we developed the Geriatric Mental Health Initiative, DGMH, as a pilot program in 2016, and in its current contracted form since 2022, which offers access to older adults to licensed mental health clinicians at older adult centers twice a week, and our hub-and-spoke model that can provide help, engagement, assessment, whenever an older adult may need it. These services are essential in helping older adults address unmet mental health needs and to support maintaining their health, independence, and connection to their communities. New York City's mental health programs are rooted in the community care model, which you've heard us talk about many times, and the work of the Cabinet for Older New Yorkers, which this council has helped to codify. Fundamental to our efforts surrounding mental health in older adults is the Community Care Plan, which was developed in 2021 as part of a recognition for the growing and changing landscape of older adult population. This also allowed New York City Aging to build on existing elements already in place to promote independence, self-reliance, and well-being for the aging population. Because mental health is an equal part of access to healthcare needs for older New Yorkers, those programs contribute to our vision. That is, the city embraces longevity, addresses aging in a dignified and natural way, and helps older New Yorkers live vibrant lives. The DGMH program integrates mental health services into settings where older adults already go, such as older adult centers, as I've mentioned, or through partnerships with other city programs already serving the aging population. In order to meet this growing need for mental health supports for older adults, we currently operate at 88 co-located DGMH sites throughout the Aging Network, 11 of which are hub sites, but all provide mental health services to older adults. The DGMH program and the hub-and-spoke model are one and the same, just two ways of reaching a greater number of older adults. In FY 2024, the DGMH program served over nearly 5,900 older adults, with 850 accessing clinical services to support their mental health, where on track to increase that number and serve more than 6,500 in FY 2025. Still a couple days to go, so I will update you on that at a later time. It is important to note that an older adult does not have to be a member of an older adult center to receive DGMH services, but can attend sessions or speak with counselors separate from the OAC programming. We continue to invest in strategies that reduce stigma, expand access, improve coordination with our providers. We're working to ensure cultural competency in these services. Clinicians are bilingual and bicultural and meet the needs of the community with the same requirement that we have for our older adult centers. When appropriate, groups are offered in other language. We have done wellness programs in Cantonese. We had a bingo class, which was a wellness bingo. We've had a class in Polish, which was called "Where Do You Find a Good Pierogi?" And these are some of the ways in which we ensure that the sessions are engaging, reduce the stigma around talking about mental health, and bring people into conversations about issues they might be facing. These engagement sessions break down that stigma, as I said before, and they establish familiarity and trust with the clinician. Often, further discussions in a clinical setting come out of these sessions. Where there is stigma for individuals or communities surrounding mental health, which the council spoke to a little earlier, we understand that we must take particular care to ensure that services are culturally appropriate and responsive to the context in which people live. These efforts are essential to ensure mental health care is accessible, effective, respectful of the diversity of New Yorkers. We want to help normalize access to care and providing support in environments that feel familiar and are welcoming, rather than just clinical. By coming into an OAC, an older adult will be able to access a hub of other services provided by the Department for the Aging and its partner network. If they don't want to come to an OAC, they can also schedule mental health counseling over the phone or by calling Aging Connect, who will then connect them to other programs. If older adults are not directly connected to one of our 88 DJM sites, OACs are further connected to clinicians throughout the hub-and-spoke model, where clinicians are leading group sessions, which I mentioned before, and they're able to partner to make sure that folks who are looking for supports are exposed to those services, and the people who are looking for services will follow the clinician back to their main site, where individuals' live services are provided. Additionally, it is typical for OAC staff to include individuals with a social work background and formal training in the social work field. NYC Aging also provides specific training for staff, show that information and assistance is relevant, and that they are able to connect older adults to the range of programs and services, including mental health needs. This allows NYC Aging to reach an ever-growing number of older adults who are aging into our services, and so that they can benefit from our programs. In addition to formal mental health counseling, we offer a wide range of informal events and services to treat older adults holistically. Physical health is part of mental health for us, and the two are very intertwined. We celebrated National Older Adult Health and Fitness Day just two weeks ago, where we encouraged New Yorkers to stay active and engaged in their communities. In the past, in Foley Square, in fact, we've hosted our intergenerational groove. I believe a few of you joined us for the groove session last year. Thanks again for being there. And that brought over 1,000 older adults into a citywide dance event to promote physical activity and well-being. We also hosted our Healthy Aging Fair in partnership with many regional hospitals and care providers, as well as the Department of Health and the Parks Department. Hundreds of older adults, even on a very rainy day, joined us for free screenings, wellness resources, and demonstrations. These efforts reflect our belief that aging includes movement, joy, and community. Ours is a holistic approach to mental health rooted in the understanding of community care, which recognizes that many factors at work when addressing mental health and the broader needs of health for older adults. While mental health needs are personal to an individual and their medical, healthcare professionals and their team, the community care role, as we are a social services agency, is really important in terms of establishing partnerships across the network and with practitioners. Food insecurity, housing insecurity, social isolation, financial insecurity are all compounding forces which can negatively impact the mental health of older adults. Considering that for many communities, there is stigma surrounding mental health, a large part of our effort is to ensure that older adults know where services are currently available. We're always open to increasing our efforts to improve marketing and outreach, to reach a greater community, and we're also making sure that we have a broader range of services and programs available for older adults. We must rely on our external or sister agency partners to ensure that that message is getting out well. Mental health services must be embedded in this model, not treated separately. As we shared before, access to food, housing, transportation, legal assistance, case assistance, financial entitlements and benefits should be prioritized and are as fundamental to addressing mental health as the clinical services. This is among the primary reasons why our Home Delivered Meals program, for example, which the co-chair mentioned earlier, is not just about delivering food, but it is a lifeline for social connection and contact, and the ability to assess if there are changes in a person's well-being. The daily interaction that we have with delivery staff are some of the only connections sometimes that an older adult may have. Additionally, our transportation program fills the critical need by helping older adults reach medical care, grocery stores, and other essential destinations. Our vision into the community care model is where the older adult can access comprehensive, connected services in the communities they helped build. Following the creation of the Community Care Plan, it was clear that connections to services across agencies, providers, nonprofits, and a variety of entities would require inter-agency collaboration, which we have seen through the Cabinet for Older New Yorkers. Since this was established in 2022, the many city agencies working together to break down silos and better coordinate services for older New Yorkers have focused on mental health supports as part of the initiatives which address mental health and identify needs among older adults. New York City Health and Hospitals Corporation, H&amp;H, the Department of Health and Mental Hygiene, our Mayor's Office of Community and Mental Health, Mayor's Public Engagement Unit, and NYC Parks are all partner agencies who have worked with us to address unmet mental health issues. This has led to important initiatives, such as establishing a curriculum for frontline workers that raises awareness about existing community-based services for older New Yorkers. This ensures that whenever older adults are walking into any of these settings, whether it's at NYC Aging or beyond NYC Aging, that those who see them, clinicians or otherwise, those professionals understand the network and know how to connect individuals to services. Additionally, the New York City Parks Geriatric Mental Health Program was developed as part of an initiative with the cabinet. In fact, in that instance, because of the Cabinet for Older New Yorkers, we knew that older adults were not connected to NYC Aging programs, but were still receiving similar or adjacent services through another agency, the Department of Parks and Recreation. That enabled us to develop an initiative with NYC Parks to focus on mental health programming at their specialized centers for older adults. We're truly meeting the needs of New Yorkers where they are and not requiring them to come to our facilities. This is the direct work of the body and why the Cabinet for Older New Yorkers was formed. These collaborative efforts demonstrate how city government can operate more effectively and more compassionately through communication around shared goals. I know part of this hearing is to discuss Introduction 1258, a bill which would require the Department of Health and Mental Hygiene to compile a list of common neurological and mental health conditions, and then transmit those to the Cabinet for Older New Yorkers. As I've described to you with our efforts around the Parks Department, the role of the Cabinet for Older New Yorkers is to break down communication silos, develop outreach plans, and utilize existing resources for the benefit of older adults. We do not view the cabinet as a think tank or a white paper cabinet designed to study items and issue reports. The initiative-driven model allows agencies to identify opportunities which meet goals and solve problems for older adults in real time. We are aligned with the council on the need to address mental health concerns for older adults, and that is evidenced in the DGMH program and our efforts to move the needle on understanding brain health and cognitive aging research. Our concern will always be to remain true to the goals and the charge of the Cabinet for Older New Yorkers, and we look forward to discussing this bill further. I continue to be proud of the great work that NYC Aging, our staff, our provider network accomplish every day. We're working smarter, more efficiently, and more creatively to meet the growing needs of older adults in New York City. With your continued partnership, we can ensure that older New Yorkers are not only cured for, but celebrated, respected, and given every opportunity to thrive. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And before we move into questions, I'd like to acknowledge that we've been joined by Councilmembers Zhuang and Krishnan. And Councilmember Krishnan will give brief remarks about the resolution being considered today. Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone, and thank you so much, Chairs Hudson and Lee. I wanted to read a statement about my resolution that's being heard today on protecting Social Security. In the last, I'm Councilmember Shaker Krishnan, representing Jackson Heights and Elmer's, Queens. In the last 100 years, there has not been a more powerful and treasured social program in the United States than Social Security. 69 million Americans rely on Social Security checks monthly, and over 16 million older adults are kept out of poverty thanks to this program. It is beyond belief that the Trump administration and Republicans in Congress have threatened to gut Social Security, a program popular amongst the majority of Americans. 86% of Republicans and 90% of Democrats support Social Security. Elon Musk's Doge team has routinely made false claims and lobbied threats at the Social Security Administration, all with the goal of undermining confidence in the system. Now, as Elon Musk and Donald Trump publicly feud about governing our country and much more, the monthly payments that our city's older adults, individuals with disabilities, and families rely on to help pay their rent, electricity bills, and groceries are in jeopardy. At every level of government, from the federal to the local level, we must realize that we cannot cut our way to prosperity. We must invest in the people and communities across this country. Standing up and protecting Social Security is a start. That's why I am proud that Resolution 852 is being heard in the Aging Committee today. This resolution calls on our partners at the federal government to do everything they can to protect Social Security from any cuts. This moment demands courage from all of us, and I can think of no worthier cause than standing up for our older adults, our individuals with disabilities, and the many others who rely on Social Security. I want to thank Chair Hudson for allowing this resolution to be heard at today's hearing, as well as Chair Lee. I want to thank my colleagues that have already signed on as cosponsors. I look forward to moving this resolution forward to show that our city stands up to protect Social Security. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Krishnan. Couldn't agree with your statements, your resolution, and your sentiments more. All right, we're going to jump into questions, starting with NYC Aging. Can you share how many older adults received mental health services through DIFDA-administered programs in fiscal year 2024?
Certainly, Chair. I've been focused on the Geriatric Mental Health Program in particular. So in fiscal year 2024, as I mentioned in testimony, we saw around 5,900, the specific number is 5,891 individuals. That is a range of engagement in some of the structured and structured sessions that I mentioned before that open up individuals to conversations around mental health issues. And that leads us to those who were assessed for more clinical services. I'm happy to speak about that, but over 5,900 individuals I'm happy to speak about that, but over 5,900 individuals were served.
Can you actually just explain the delta there? I know 5,900 were served, 852 were accessing those clinical services you mentioned. And just like, what does that look like? Are the 5,900 that were served, are they just receiving basic information, the others being referred themselves? Are they coming in and asking for those types of services? If you can get to that, that would be helpful.
Sure. As I shared in testimony, one of the things that's really important for us is to ensure that mental conversations around mental health are routine, are normalized, and are accessible to older adults. And so in our structure, one of the things that we do at our 88 sites is make sure that the clinicians are onsite at least two days a week and are facilitating conversations that are tailored to that particular community. So you've heard me talk about the where do you find a good pierogi, as well as the bingo, or not bingo, but the game that's played, that was played to make sure you're looking at wellness. So when we talk about the broader set, it is any of those sessions where we're engaging older adults around mental health issues. As you, as the council acknowledged and I shared, that hopefully then leads to individuals who, if they want more individualized time, or they're presenting something that they want to talk to the clinician about, there would be an assessment that happens. And so what you're seeing as the delta is those who have moved forward from group sessions and that structured session with a clinician through to enrolling in individualized sessions with a clinician.
Thank you so much for that. And do you have numbers for the Hub and Spoke Program, Protect and Clinical Services for Homebound Older Adults, TeleProtect, Person Center Trauma Informed Initiative, and Reassurance and Interpersonal Supportive Engagement by Chance?
Sure. What I'll tell you is, again, I'm focused principally on the DJMH program, the clinical sessions that are provided there. I'll just give you a number. It's on over 10,883 actual sessions were delivered. When we talk about the other-
Sorry, 883 or 833?
10,883.
Thank you.
And when you're referring to other programs that are embedded, there's two parts to this. We see a number of individuals outside of our OACs who might be experienced in our Elder Justice Program, who we have clinicians onsite as well, who are there if folks are survivors of abuse or crime, and there are services that are happening. When you talk about the Protect model, what we're doing there is ensuring that, I'll come back to you with the numbers, but it's really the approach. It's a structured, evidence-based program to ensure that individuals are making some progress as survivors. The other program that you mentioned, the Person Center Trauma Informed, that's newer. We recently got a grant from JFNA to implement this program. And what we're looking at is, you know, as you can imagine, trauma-informed care across the board, right, is something that we need to deepen our practice around. And this is as a system, it's not just NYC Aging. So the PCTI is really, while there, I could get back to you on the numbers of individuals served, the big thing that we're talking about is enhancing our capacity as a network to be more trauma-informed.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And do you have those numbers compared to fiscal year 2023 or pre-pandemic numbers?
Sure. Again, for our DJMH program, looking, I have it, so not pre-pandemic on me right now, but as always, counsel, you know, I will follow up and you'll get the numbers. What I'm looking at across the board here is in 2021, the numbers were for all clients engaged as a part of the program, 21, 2175, so 2,175 individuals. And you see that number being roughly consistent in 2022 with 2,017 individuals. The number doubled in FY23, thereabouts, so it was 4,684. And as I shared in testimony, that number is going to jump again significantly in 2025, but I'll wait for the year to wrap up.
Thank you so much. What is the current caseload or capacity per clinician in DJMH Initiative?
I'll have to get back to you on that specific number. We don't have it on hand today.
Okay. Do you just know offhand whether there are staffing shortages or wait lists?
We don't have wait lists, but I, and I wouldn't frame it as a shortage. I think what we have, we're always looking, again, when I talked about the program, culturally appropriate and bilingual, bicultural individuals. Across the board in the clinical world, I think we are, everyone will say, there are, there are challenges in terms of recruiting, retaining individuals. And so whether it's licensed clinical social workers, licensed counselors, psychiatrists, and so on, it is expensive. And I think we have to do much more, as many of the reports and health department can speak to this separately, suggest we've got to invest more in the field as a whole. So there, what our model is built on is understanding that scarcity, if you will, with the resources that we have available, this is why the Hub and Spoke model is so important, where the clinician is able to, whether they're based at an HQ, move around to our, to sites within the 88, and that ensures that there's a presence of a clinician. Again, it's, they're structured in engagement, there's familiarity that happens with the clinician being onsite, and then they're able to, you know, as people are interested, enroll individuals into individualized therapy, counseling sessions, and so on. So there is a challenge in staffing overall, in whether it's mental health or social services, so that is well documented. But our model, I think, ensures that we can make services available on the ground. And I think we're always looking to recruit folks of various backgrounds so that we can maintain that cultural relevance to the community.
Do you have a per-borough breakdown for those 88 locations?
I happen to have that right in front of me.
Amazing.
One second. So the Bronx has 15, Brooklyn has 26, Manhattan 23, Queens 19, and Staten Island 5.
Thank you. And then what geographic areas have limited or no access to DIFTA-funded mental health services?
I would say that that doesn't, that's not really the case. Given the Hub and Spoke model, this is about making sure that, you know, clinical services are embedded in community, just like our older adult centers. And it's why we emphasize having clinicians who move around to various sites. And also, it's important to acknowledge that older adults who might be, if you're in a center that's nearby, many of you have visited our centers, you know, there's often another center nearby, not always, but often. You can go to the hub or to another site nearby, call our Aging Connect number and get connected. So there isn't a particular community where we don't have services.
Okay, good to hear. Do all DIFTA-funded older adult centers offer onsite mental health services?
For the Geriatric Mental Health Program, they're at 88 sites. And so-
So no.
So no, our older adult centers are at 33. However, given the model that we've structured, there's opportunity for older adult centers to partake of those services in a nearby center. The other thing that we-
So there's no, so there's no plan explicitly to close those gaps?
I would echo what our commissioner always says. Well, I would say this. I would say that the, the needs are always going to outpace, right, the resources available, and we are always looking at whether or not we need to expand. The program started out with 25 sites. It expanded to 45, and during the last RFP, we're now at 88. So there is a commitment by us to where we see that we need to expand, we'll have those conversations.
Okay, great. Therapy and counseling are more effective when they're consistent. How often can an older adult participate in a counseling session, and are there restrictions?
I would say that we would work with the clinicians to ensure that the assessment reflects whatever that plan needs to be. That's a pretty individualized treatment plan that would, would need to be put in place. So I wouldn't necessarily say that there's a cap. I think it's all about making sure that we're actually addressing the needs of the individuals. And just as a fact, we, you know, looking at our outcomes across a three-month period, right, we see that there's impact there. So I wouldn't necessarily talk about limits in this case, but rather that the assessment is as clear as possible so that we could address those needs.
Sorry, can I just ask a really quick follow-up? So I know that for the clinics, they have to follow the state regulations, which requires them to do at least three sessions to do an intake. So is, are the GM, D, sorry, DGMCHs, I'm sorry.
Geriatric Mental Health.
Geriatric Mental Health.
I'm not good with initialisms either.
Sorry. Are they, are they under, are they basically following that same protocol?
Sure. The state guidelines are in place. We are licensed by New York State. And at least one session, once you get into the services, at least weekly, is usually the treatment plan. But again, it would be based on the plan for that individual.
Okay, great. I'd like to also acknowledge that we've been joined by Councilmember Banks. How many OACs with onsite mental health services have Article 31 licensed mental health clinics versus other types of providers? And can you clarify the distinction in services between sites that have licensed Article 31 clinics and those that offer general mental health supports or counseling?
Let me get back to you on the answer, the full answer to that. I'll follow up on this one.
Okay. And then I have several follow-ups, so I'll wait for you to come with your details. Are DIFTA-funded mental health services accessible to undocumented older adults or those without insurance?
Yes.
How are DIFTA's mental health programs integrating with NYC Health and Hospitals, DOHMH, and Medicaid-funded behavioral health networks?
I think in short, one of the things that's important for us is, you know, and the health department can speak to the range of services offered for all. Our goal is to ensure that older adults are, as I said before, this will be like a repeated note, valuing, understanding that there are these services available and making sure that they're available where they are. The clinicians who are working with older adults are then going to provide support, and they're aware, we spend a lot of time, whether it's via the Cabinet, or you've heard me talk about before, Chair, training that happens for the care teams at Health and Hospitals, H&amp;H. We really spend a lot of time coordinating and making sure that they're aware of what older adult centers are and vice versa. So referral networks are in place to, whether it's a more specialized service that someone needs.
Thank you for that. And we did send the questions about Article 31 ahead of time in advance.
I have an answer for you.
Okay, I'm ready.
So the breakdown is 68 are Article 31, and 20 are faculty practice model.
20?
20.
Are, which model?
The faculty practice model, which will, which I can follow up with much more details on.
Okay. Then let me just run down my list of questions with specific regards to Article 31. Have there been any evaluations of the impact of Article 31 clinics within OACs on older adult mental health outcomes? For example, are there metrics such as improved depression scores, reduced hospitalizations, or increased service uptake that demonstrate the effectiveness of these colocation models?
So yes. And we've done an evaluation. I, I'm not sure I'm distinguishing here between the types of facilities, but what we can tell you is that, example, in FY24, 27.2% of clients saw significant improvement in social isolation metrics over a three-month period. Similarly, when we look at loneliness, we saw a 28% improvement. Depression, there's 58% improvement for those who participate in the program, and then anxiety, 44%.
Great. Given the diversity of New York City's older adult population, how do Article 31 clinics in OACs ensure that mental health services are linguistically and culturally appropriate? And I know you mentioned a little bit of this earlier.
Yeah. So I mean, back, back to what we're looking for, right? We want to make sure that the individuals, obviously licensure is important, so that's a, that's a baseline, but folks are from the community, and it's important for us to ensure that services are delivered in the languages that are accessible to the particular community, and also in the cultural context, right? Given stigma for everybody around mental health, there's lots of work to be done in all communities. And so that's why it was really, is really important for us to be as engaging as possible, make sure that the clinicians aren't showing up on the day for therapy, but they're there as a consistent presence so that folks become familiar, that they're running workshops and group sessions that, where others can participate, that they're available for a walk-by conversation where someone isn't being assessed, because that could be a barrier initially, but they're saying, you know, I've been feeling this way or that way. So that presence is critically important, and I think the linguistic and the cultural background of, of the clinicians are also important. It's also, you know, we spent a lot of time, you know, as we expanded, to make sure that, that those requirements are understood. We have some of our network providers here, at least one in SPAP, I think, is in the room. These are the things that we pay attention to in our oversight as well.
Amazing. And I'm going to make an assumption on your answers to my next couple of questions, which is that bilingual clinicians or interpreters are readily available? And that-
There's always more to be done.
Of course, of course. But they are available, generally speaking, right? And OACs and clinics coordinate outreach to immigrant and limited English proficiency communities to reduce stigma and increase engagement with mental health services, which is a little bit of what you just discussed.
And just to tell you the languages that we have documented.
Yeah.
English, Spanish, Mandarin, Cantonese, Russian, Ukrainian, I told you Polish earlier, and Italian.
Thank you. How routinely do OAC staff and clinic staff communicate? Is there a formal coordination protocol or memorandum of understanding, bless you, bless you, that guides collaboration on participant needs, referrals, and programming?
Sure. Just establishing where the older adult center, the Geriatric Mental Health Program could be is a coordination effort in and of itself. Our, our team, Dr. Aberson over here and others, first are going to look at what, well, we look at, you know, we looked at tree neighborhoods before, task force racial equity and inclusion, and looked at all the data to say where, where should we embed? Where are there not other Article 31 clinics in community or other services? Where is there an emerging need? That's step one. And with the OAC, we look at participation levels, and we've become a bit more flexible on that as the years have gone by, because we want to make sure that in our efforts, the outreach there's there, there, right, for where we establish a program. But as we said before, in our network, we have presentations, we have, there is the, if you're going to have the site there, you make sure that there's a private office that's available to the clinician so that they can have one-on-one sessions, assessment or clinical. So that's the kind of coordination that happens on the ground, and it's facilitated between our oversight team at the Department for the Aging, as well as the, the program officers with the older adult centers. And then the clinicians, they are embedded, they're a part of the calendar. I've gone to many, as you know, I've seen over half the sites, and I show up on days where I don't know what the calendar is, and I meet a clinician who is there facilitating a group. And that's a sure sign that that coordination is, is strong. That's our expectation, that they're there, they're part of the workings of the center, they're available, they can be reached by the center directors. And as we said before, not 100%, but often we have some in our staffing plans for older adult centers, folks with social work and other types of backgrounds who may be speaking the same language and able to engage with each other.
Thank you so much. I want to acknowledge that we've also been joined by Councilmembers Hanif and Mealy. To what extent do Article 31 clinics and OACs share client-level data or referrals while adhering to HIPAA and other privacy protections? Can OAC staff refer participants directly to onsite clinical services?
Yes.
Okay.
And, and yeah, so yes, there's referral pathways.
Okay. Are the Article 31 clinics involved in planning or co-hosting wellness programming within the OACs, such as mental health literacy workshops, grief groups, or stress reduction classes?
Yes.
Yes? Are mental health clinicians embedded in or visible at day-to-day center activities, or is their work separate from regular OAC activities?
Yeah, as I shared, as I shared, at least twice a week, just being present, but in the, when you develop the calendar with particularly the Geriatric Mental Health Programs and the OACs, it's usually something is happening that brings down, brings a conversation around mental health to the table. You may not call it that, given stigma and other barriers, but, you know, as we said, like Summer Breeze Makes Me Fine, Feel[1779.16] barriers, but, you know, as we said, like Summer Breeze Makes Me Fine, Feel Fine is a workshop that was really about the weather and feelings recently hosted. Mental Health Awareness Month was last month, right? May? It's already June. And we, our, our team at NYC Aging did a fair amount of work to make sure that on the calendar, there were topics available on the older adult center. So that is how we try to continue coordinating between the two programs.
And how do OACs and Article 31 clinics assess the changing mental health needs in their shared communities? And how do they adapt or scale programming based on observed trends and feedback?
Sure. I, I think even more to be done here. In our, we just recently did internal look at our oversight practices. And one of the things we did was survey, like nearly 200 older adult center directors. And you would, you wouldn't be surprised, and the co-chair, having run these programs, that the center directors have said, look, I need additional training and support around dealing with where their clients have cognitive decline and who've been members for 20, 30 years. And so, yes, training is an ongoing need for our program directors, and I think we've got much more to do here. But that's again, why we, we spend time with our partners in the Cabinet and elsewhere.
Thank you so much. I'm going to kick it over to Chair Lee. I'll come back with some additional questions. Thank you.
Okay. So I just wanted to actually follow up on some of the questions that were raised, which some of them you actually did answer already. But in terms of the one that we just went over in terms of the referrals, how fluid is it? So for example, if there are, if there are seniors from one senior center that actually need a clinician at a different one, like those referrals can happen, cross-referrals, and it's not really an issue, right?
Yeah, no, that's the, that's the entire model for the hubs, right? That if you, if there's a hub down the street and you are not a member there, that's okay. You know, that this is why we also coordinate with our center directors, those referrals can happen. And if there are folks who used to come to the center but not, might now be homebound, for example, again, referral can happen there from our case management program.
And then can you just clarify, for the Hub and Spoke Program, you had mentioned 10,883 sessions provided. So is, does that equal 10,883 unique individuals, or are those sessions?
Unique sessions.
Okay, unique sessions, okay.
The individuals would be the 850.
Got it. Okay, I just wanted to clarify. And then can you tell us more about the TeleProtect Program? And, and the reason why I ask is because I wonder when we're thinking about cost savings as well, if this could be something that, but I, I just wanted to hear more about the TeleProtect Program.
Yeah, as I, as I shared earlier, I think it's important to ensure that telehealth, telemedicine is available across the board. The TeleProtect and the Protect Program is particularly unique in terms of its focus, so I wouldn't want to distract from the broader message here, which is our services across the board are embedded in our older adult centers in our communities and available to anyone who needs it. With that model, I think we're, we've shifted a little bit to looking at, and, you know, we just had an RFP for this, looking at any other models that are out there, because what's important is the capacity of our network, right? And this is the frontline workers. So telehealth and beyond TeleProtect, I think is important and also available, and I think we can spend more time looking at those models.
I agree. And some of them, especially for homebound, maybe can benefit from that as well, which would be great.
Absolutely.
I still remember when we were, in the beginning of COVID, we had staff literally going to individual homes of our seniors to like help them download Zoom and all these other things, so that they could access services, which was a huge feat in and of itself, I'm not going to lie. That was, that was a lot of work on our staff. But, you know, to, to sort of combat that isolation and depression feeling, which definitely helped. And, and can you clarify, so I know that you were saying that year-over-year, there's been increases in the, the number of onsite mental health clinics. And so, how does, so is there going to be another RFP, or is it open where you could just sort of add folks if they're interested in having one at their site?
Well, I think that our, our team is always looking for opportunities to expand. So one example of a recent expansion that's going to happen is actually not in an OAC, but I might have mentioned it very briefly in testimony, but with the Parks Department, where they have a, you know, they have rec centers that are senior rec centers, and they call them senior rec centers, and they're not our older adult centers. And it was important, given the location, this is one, there are two, one in Fort Hamilton, the other one in Greenbelt, that we recently expanded to, where we're going to have a program there with the Parks Department. So we do always look at the opportunities to expand. I think when you're talking about a significant expansion, then that might get into the world of additional resources needed.
Okay. Actually, that was, thank you, because that was actually one of the questions I had written when I was following. Because I, I love the idea of partnering with Parks Department, especially because there are so many groups that do a lot of activities in the parks, older adult groups, they do a lot of the Tai Chi, they do different games that they, you know, have in the Parks Department. So can you, so speaking on that, maybe this isn't totally fleshed out yet, because it may be a new partnership you're talking about, but how do you plan on partnering with the specific groups that are within the Parks Department? Because I know it's in a park, but some of the groups may not be affiliated with the New York City Aging Department. And so how do we get them into the mix and then also capture the data on that? Or is it something more informal?
No, I think we're going, we're going formal. But, but we start out informal, so that's, that's part of the Cabinet, right? And the goal for us, we see over 250,000 older adults across our network, depending on the services, unique, right? But they're one, two million, nearly 2 million older adults. And whether it's seen at a Department of Health Clinic, or H&amp;H Hospital, or somewhere else, Parks Department, they're getting benefits through the Department of Social Services. Our goal is to continuously expand our reach and focus on older adults. So when you think about the Cabinet, it is important for us to always have these conversations. So in the development of that initiative, it was the Parks Department liaison. We have a liaison structure with our, our Cabinet, where we meet monthly, and then the principals, commissioners, and deputy mayors and otherwise, meet on a quarterly basis to keep track of what's going on. But on a monthly basis, we have breakout groups, there's an Aging Health Committee, for example, and this is where the magic actually happens. So when, you know, you say, look at a particular issue, I say, of course we will. It's not a report then, it is us really thinking about what are the things that we could do first at no cost to either agency, or any of the agencies involved, it's using existing resources. And this happened to be one, the older adults are over there, our clinical services are nearby, let's get them over, over to you. That's how that happened. And then there's some more formal agreements that are put in place to then ensure data and so on. So we'll be happy to come back at some point and report on how that initiative went.
I feel like we're doing a good tag team, because you're totally reminding me of the questions that I want to ask, because you're teeing me up for, I had a question around the Cabinet, actually, because I'm a huge fan in finding alternative programs, because I am a firm believer that not everything has to be clinically based, per se. I think there's a lot of power in peer support groups as well. And so, is the Cabinet discussing alternative programs that could be beneficial for older adults experiencing mental health issues? And then, you know, in terms of other partners, is there effort with reaching out to the faith-based communities? Because I know that in my community, in the Korean community, there's a lot of churches that are essentially senior centers. And I feel like we need to somehow bring them into the mix, and is there outreach in that community as well for the faith-based groups?
And as you well know, there are many senior centers and churches.
Yes.
Which I've visited in the basements. So yes and yes, we are having some of those conversations, we can have more, and then get more structured around it, right? I think it is go where people are and strengthen those partnerships. That's the baseline for everything we're doing. To your point about peer support, I might, I said, I'm talking a lot, but I might turn to my colleague or, or just keep going. Obviously, peer models work, we know that, right? They're not appropriate for everything, there's, it's, it's critical for individualized sessions to happen. And sometimes the peer models happen in groups, where the clinician's there, and then someone says, well, you know, who knows that older adult and has happened. Here's some other things you can think about, here's what this means for my life. So as much as we could engage and as appropriately as we could engage peers and others, I think, of course, we're committed to that.
Thank you. And then switching over more to Dr. Wright. So is, for, given the growing mental needs of the aging population, is, and also given the workforce shortage, are you guys partnering with, let's just say, CUNY, for example, or other local graduate schools, medical schools, to sort of help build the pipeline and train more folks to go into the field?
Thank you for your question, Councilmember. We do not officially partner with CUNY in terms of training or dedicated pipelines to train providers, but we do work with those individuals and those agencies to make sure that if there is a need, that we're available to them.
Okay. And then if there's any opportunities for trainings with different agencies, for example, how closely do you partner then with DIFTA, if, in case there are, you know, trainings that maybe we need to provide for not just the clinical staff, but the non-clinical staff at the senior centers as well?
Yeah, we partner with NYC Aging in, in quite a bit, and also because we're both members of the mayor's office, you know, that's where that partnership really takes place as well. But, you know, we're open to more partnerships and, and any suggestions that are out there.
Okay. And then just in terms of, because I love data, because I think it tells a story, not the whole picture, but it tells a snapshot of a story. So, so even though you don't, even though DOHMH does not directly operate services, the data collected guides policy and funding decisions for sure. So how is DOHMH ensuring that mental health data related to older adults is actively shared and used by other city agencies? I mean, I know, obviously, we don't want to violate HIPAA, but I just, I do think that there's an opportunity to use whatever data is being collected and have that shared, so that it could better inform how we deliver services, so.
Absolutely, Chair. And so what I can tell you is that all of our data is posted on our website, so that's easy accessible there as well. But we also share it with our providers and the partnerships that we have in the community. You may remember that in 2019, we had a deep dive on the report for aging. So we don't do that every year, but every year we produce surveillance data, epidemiological data, and that's collected and posted every year. So it may not be as deep of a dive as the report in 2019, but certainly, we are constantly publishing data and making it available on the website.
Okay. And then do you, but is there, or can there be partnership where there is data collected at the OACs that are part of the Geriatric Mental Health Initiative that then get forwarded to DOHMH? Like, can it go that way as well?
I think data sharing across agencies, where it depends on the level of data you're, you're thinking about, but strengthening our key communication and coordination is at the core of what we're trying to do always. So depending on what you're thinking about, the answer could be yes. You know, while you're talking data, you know, the Bold Coalition that we, we've joined, looking at Alzheimer's and related dementia, other related disorders, is led by Department of Health, and I know that they've been looking at surveillance and prevalence data and so on, and just wrapped up a needs assessment, is one example. And so whether it's programmatic data sharing of things we're seeing, I think that's easy to do. Other kinds of coordination, where there's a referral, depending on if it's a behavioral side or something else, that's more structured. But there, the, the Department of Health is leading a coalition focused on, the Bold Coalition that Dr. Wright could talk about a little bit more. We're members, and we're looking forward to what comes out of that.
And I would just add, Chair, that we partner with NYC Aging on other things like vaccines and sharing that data, health updates, new resources, funding opportunities like RFPs, requests for proposals. And so when NYC Aging asks us to participate and partner, we certainly say yes.
And what gaps do you think exist in the current surveillance systems, I guess, when it comes to understanding older adult mental health in New York City? And what investments do you think are needed to close those gaps?
I think one thing that we could say is that continued communication amongst our agencies that are already partnering together, and making sure that the data we have is accurate and up to date, it's a challenge sometimes, because like the most recent data we have in terms of surveillance, you mentioned, is 2022. And so getting that real-time data, I think, is a challenge. Not sure about my colleague, but that's, that's a major challenge.
So I would say maybe one of the gaps is just having up-to-date information. Okay. The mayor's office is, so OCMH, the 2024 Annual Report highlights loneliness and social isolation among older adults as major mental health risks. And what does this tell us about the scope and trajectory of these issues among this population, especially post-COVID?
Thank you for your question, Chair. I, I think the important thing is that when we look at overall mental health in New Yorkers, older adults aged 65 and older actually had better mental health outcomes than the other age groups. That being said, you hit on an excellent point, and that is social isolation is a challenge for all New Yorkers in terms of dealing with mental health, especially since the pandemic. But we also looking at serious psychological distress, unmet need for mental health treatment, all of those areas, older adults are actually faring better than the rest of New Yorkers. So again, it's important, and when you think about things like clubhouses, when you think about some of our programs that particularly cater to older adults, it actually addresses the social isolation head-on. And, you know, as our colleague talked about earlier, peers, and having individuals that form a community actually reduces that social isolation.
And Chair, one of the thing I will add is, you know, there's some prevalence assessments, as you've seen probably in the report that you referred to just now, Eva Wong and team published, about 20% of the population meet the criteria for mental health issues, right? And that is expected to increase significantly in the next few years. It's interesting, DOHMH's report opens up with uncertainty, isolation, and loss are things that exacerbated mental health issues and experiences for all older New Yorkers. We'll say that again, right, is uncertainty, isolation, and loss, which for older adults could be a thing, especially as one ages. And so, we, we know it is going to be critical for all of us to ensure that we're squarely looking at mental health. And I will pull back again to say, and that includes all of the things, you know, whether it's folks say social determinants over here, I say community care over here, we're all talking about the things that drive folks to not feel well. And how do we keep those conditions to a level, whether it's food or housing and otherwise, where, you know, the stressors, if you will, are less. And then if, where there is cognitive decline that could happen with age, and, and you're also ensuring that you have strong connections to your clinical care, right, your healthcare practitioner, just like we are now used to saying, you should go to your routine visit once a year, and that's become something that everybody appreciates, then mental health should be normalized as well, getting that mental health checkup.
Definitely. And especially given the population, I know depression rates are pretty high. And according to the 2019 DOHMH report on health of older adults, I think the report had said about 9% of New Yorkers aged 65 and older screened positive for depression. I would imagine it's gone up quite a bit. And rates were higher among women and among Latino older adults compared to white older adults. And older adults in lower-income households were far more likely to experience depression than those in higher-income households. So can you speak to whether those rates have changed since the pandemic, and if so, how? And how is DOH, how does DOHMH currently monitor and track trends in depression in older adults? And how frequently is the data updated?
Thank you for the question, Chair. So I'll answer the back end of the question first, in terms of, we are doing surveillance on all New Yorkers, including older adults, on a regular basis. And so that's why I say, even though we didn't have a more recent report since 2019, that is updated every year, yeah. In terms of the specific about the pandemic, what we saw in 2021 was about 67% of adults in New York reported feeling socially isolated in that year. That was reduced by 40% by 2023. So the trend is getting better.
Okay.
In terms of that specific question that you asked. Specifically for older adults, only 28% reported feeling socially isolated, which is the lowest of all the groups that we report on. So again, although that is still a concern, it is less than the number for the rest of New Yorkers, that, looking at that particular data. In terms of depression, anxiety, as you alluded to, those are certainly some challenges that all New Yorkers are dealing with. And it's actually, again, for that 65 and older group, it's actually less than the rest of New Yorkers. So the outcomes are better for older New Yorkers 65 and above.
Okay. And can we, can you point us to where we can find the data online? The most recent one, I'm sorry.
Yes. So you should be able to get that from our website. Oh, the EpiDataBreeze, I'm sorry. Thank you. The EpiDataBreeze.
Got it, okay. Got it, okay. Perfect. And then similarly, same question with dementia, cognitive decline and co-occurring mental health conditions. How have those rates? Do you know what the most recent numbers are, how those rates have changed since COVID and 2019?
Right, so from a national aspect, let me just give you that first and then compare it to us. So estimated 6.7 million older adults with dementia, in this particular case Alzheimer's disease. Alzheimer's dementia is the most common type of dementia, accounting for 60 to 80% in the United States. As Chair Hudson mentioned earlier, and I appreciate your opening statement Chair, I also have a personal stake in it. My mom, who will be 90 in October, diagnosed with vascular dementia. So not only am I a clinician, you know, that deals with geriatric psychology, although that's not my area of expertise. My siblings being caregivers and my sister having the brunt of that now that we all live out of town really is looking at how that information can be used to support caregivers. And so when you think about the, the particular data that you mentioned Chair, for New Yorkers, it's actually not as prevalent as the rest of the country. So it's a little less than the national average, but it's still prevalent.
Is that because people are not getting tested and diagnosed? Yeah, what's, what's the reason?
I think, you know, I can't give you a clinical answer, but I can give you a more anecdotal answer if that's okay. And that is one thing. As an example, my mom is in Ohio, rural Ohio, not as many opportunities to be in communion, social isolation is higher. New York being dense actually has better outcomes for adults in terms of older adults in that way. In that there is more accessibility and more peers in terms of that. But in terms of whether they're getting tested and whether there is a specific test that some are getting and not getting, I really can't speak to that Chair.
Yeah, because I know you have to go through a neurological process, which I think is more cumbersome, I would say. So I could see how that could potentially deter people from going through that process, especially if there's not a doctor or physician that they feel understands where their cultural needs are and language needs maybe perhaps.
And we have a unit that, you know, in Chequah, which is our Center for Healthy Equity. And I'm just looking at some of the, they don't have specific numbers for testing or how many people get tested or, so that's why I'm kind of hesitating on giving you a definitive answer. We don't have a definitive answer on testing.
I do know that if you're black or Hispanic, your rate of, or at least Alzheimer's disease is more prevalent in those communities and also for women. So.
Yes.
I don't know population wise compared to the rest of the country where New York stands, but I'm surprised to hear that statistic.
Me too, especially on the depression, well, the suicide also, because I know that studies have shown, I think, a lot of the Asian older adult women have some of the highest rates of suicide and depression. So I'm just wondering if that's being, I mean, it may just be, I don't know, in terms of number wise, but maybe percentage population comparatively, but interesting, okay.
Right, and Chair Hudson hit on an important point, and that is the inequities based on race, ethnicity. So there certainly the numbers are a lot worse for that particular group, black and Latino. New Yorkers is definitely more pervasive.
And when you're collecting the data, is it mostly from, where is it coming from? Is it mostly just hospitals? Individual physicians, offices, nonprofit organizations? Like where is the data being collected from?
So the data is being collected from, you know, the, the areas that we support. So we have over 200 providers. But we also partner with H&amp;H hospitals, we also partner with our CBOs. And so it would be a combination of all those accessible points that have data on the folks that we can actually connect with in New York.
Okay, good to know. Okay, and then just really quickly, this is more for, I think, DOHMH, but also hopefully DIFTA. But how, how do you guys also partner with the state folks? On the mental health piece?
Yes, we do partner with the state. The state actually has a little more robust budget, as you can imagine, in that regard. But we certainly do partner with them as, in, with many of our programs.
Okay, the reason why I'm saying that is because maybe you guys can join me, but I'm like really, really, really trying to plead with state Department of Health, specifically their Medicaid Department, because and I think the homage commissioner, Anne Sullivan, is really great too on this, and she gets it because we're trying to see, it's not just about, like, how do we sustain the services that are happening in the city with a lot of our providers in the nonprofit community? So how do we not just reimburse higher for this current services, but also how do we cast the net wider to get more reimbursements for things like education and outreach services? Because I would argue that those are just as important. So, I don't know, maybe you guys can join me in that sort of advocacy, because I really, I would love to see that being both wider and deeper in terms of what we can do. Because that's more of like a state issue, I understand. It's not really something the city can change, but I would love to see if there's more we could do there and partner on.
We appreciate your support in that regard Chair.
Happy to partner as well. Obviously, you know, we, we know there is some shifting landscape at play right now. While the, you know, we were granted the authorities for 1115 waiver, Department of Social Services and others are really taking the lead there. We agree with community care and all the other things that affect, but I think we're gonna, we happy to partner, but also know that there's some shifting sands right now.
No problem. Before I continue on with my questions, I want to turn it over to Councilmember Mealy.
Good afternoon. I just have a few questions in regards to community care. If we have the programs in the centers, what is your, what would your clinician consider someone mentally? And they would refer them for the services. If someone come in the senior center with 10 bags and umbrella up, how would the clinician approach that individual, that senior? To even try to get them resources that they need? Could you give me example?
Sure. So I, I don't want to go too far down with this case because I, I am not assessing the individual, I'm not their clinical provider. The first thing I would say though, you know, again, you've been to many of our centers, Councilmember, and I'm, I can think of three or four where I've met someone with their bags and umbrellas and so on, including in the last two months. What I, I'll give, I'll give you that example where the staff, so put clinicians aside, although that, the, the center director was a licensed clinical social worker herself, she wasn't part of the DJMH program, but they did have a DJMH program at that site also. The first and foremost, some compassion and engagement, not making assumptions about what, what's going on with all the bags and the umbrellas, right? Like, we gotta make sure that we remain welcoming to everybody and try to understand what's going on with that individual. It so happened that that center director knew that individual really well and, and there were things at play. The person was in care, they had, were in psychiatric care. And that day and many days, not all days, they were engaged as much as possible with their, their other center participants, right? So engagement, you know, trying to engage a person compassionately and understand what's going on. This is independent of the DJMH program is something we expect of all centers. And then I think, given that that person was in care, if there was a need for ongoing counseling or other kinds of engagement, then I think the center director would be working closely with the DJMH clinician on site to
How often do you think they come together and talk about those kind of issues with our seniors? That they will be still treated with dignity and how you could delicately make sure that their resources is given to them in a proper manner respectfully? How often do you think that each center talk in regards to how they would address situations like that?
I can't give you a number on this record. What I will tell you is
Do you think we should? Because it's happening.
Let me answer the first part of the question, Councilmember.
Some of our seniors are displaced and that's gotten them mentally unstable just as well. Some is homeless. So how can we get a group that address those issues right there with the clinician?
Yeah. So again, Councilmember, part of what I was trying to respond to in your questioning was specifically about the center director period and the staffing on site, right? I'm sure the chair of the health, having run centers, understands case conferencing and making sure you know your members is a bottom line. As I shared earlier in a response to a question from, I think, Chair Hudson, we, we at NYC Aging have been looking at our assessment process and actually one of the things when we surveyed our older adult center directors that came up was precisely what you're talking about. So while they might be dealing very carefully with that on a site by site basis, there is more to be done here. There are some programs that are great at engaging. I think of, I don't want to name names, but there are some programs who have, who might have more individuals that are homeless or unhoused than others and are spending a lot of time sharing best practices within the network. But to your question about how often, I think they're, they're required to have these conversations about their members, you know, frequently.
They have conversations, but what are they really trying to hone in on to make sure that our seniors?
Case assist, let me be concrete with you then. Case assistance and ensure that the individuals are connected.
Do you have any database on the case assistance?
I, yeah, of course I do.
I would love to see that.
I'm happy to provide you with numbers around case assistance. I'm also happy to invite you to conversations where you have providers who are more apt at this. And one of the things that we plan to do, as I shared earlier, is make sure that we do updated trainings for all of our older adult centers.
I love it. I will definitely meet with you. Can I have one extra question? You said RFP. How, how soon would you feel a RFP will be given? I read in one of the statements, how long is the process for RFP for program?
Are you referring to the RFP process for the DJMH program or generally?
Generally, and both really.
Well, you, you previously chaired the contract committee. So you know that a request for proposal process could be rapid or it could take some time. Now, in terms of the, if you're asking about DJMH, we, we, we're, we're in the middle of our, our programs right now. So there isn't an RFP that's planned for tomorrow, as an example.
What about a senior center?
If you're asking about the older adult centers, the answer is still the same. From budget as well as prior, which is, we were looking at whether or not we should be releasing an RFP this year. You've heard that message before.
Well, the commissioner said that it would be happening.
I think in our, you can refer to her testimony in the, in the last hearing. She also said that we're gonna, that is our plan. We're gonna have to look carefully, especially with the current contacts, federal government and otherwise, at whether or not it is prudent to release the RFP right now, i.e. the end of this year. Our plan remains. We will continue planning as if so, but we're going to be looking at whether or not the release timeline is prudent. And I think she said that in different words at the last hearing.
I was just trying to make sure I'm hearing everything correctly.
It's consistent messaging.
But please know that right now we need a RFP in Brooklyn with Mount Arat. Right now it is on the city dime, so I'm looking forward to making sure that a senior center, a senior house and 420 units need a center. A certified RFP center. So please keep that Mount Arat.
Okay, thank, thank you for that. You've raised Mount Arat many times. I'm glad that Fort, Fort Greene is in there with you and operating that center currently. And thank you for the funding to make that happen.
Thank you. I would love to talk to you afterwards.
Okay.
Thank you, Councilmember. Okay, how many DIFTA clinicians or partner providers speak a language other than English? I know we talked extensively about the presence of the services, but do we have a number?
I can get that back to you on that number.
And the languages that you mentioned before are the languages that you provide services in, but are those also the same as the languages that are most in demand? And I guess a better question would be, is there a gap between the service, the languages that you're providing services in and other languages that are being requested at sites?
Sure, I, I think we could, we'd have to look at that really carefully, right? But these are the in-demand languages across our network. They're obviously emerging languages.
We're good.
But I, I would have to get back to you on it, whether or not there's gaps, but these are, this is a pretty broad swath of languages for New York.
Yeah, definitely. And I would just be curious to know, and you can follow up with this if you don't have it now, but of, at those 88 sites, like how many people is it, you know, one per every three or four, or like across those different languages? You know, those are the types of numbers I would like to know. What strategies are in place to address stigma around mental health services among older New Yorkers? Among immigrant communities specifically and communities of color? We've all sort of touched on this a little bit, but I'm wondering if there's sort of deliberate programming or information being provided, approaches being taken to address the stigma?
I think as I shared earlier, the way the program is structured itself is in response to stigma. In terms of structured and unstructured engagements, presence of a clinician, ensuring that the clinicians are of the community, have the background, have the language capacity, that in itself ensures that the presence, and this is a routine, you, you know Judy, who comes here every Tuesday and Thursday. That is deliberate. It, it might, not to you, it might sound like it's just a thing, but it's actually deliberate so that that clinician becomes a part of that older adult center. That is what the model is based on.
That's great. It doesn't sound like just a little thing. I just, you know, I want to make sure I'm getting the information on the record. But I think, you know, that's a, it's a great example, that, that is exactly how we lift the stigma and how somebody would then feel like it's no big deal to go see Judy or talk to Judy because Judy's always there. So I'm with you.
And, and Chair, I mean, the other thing is, I know we're saying better off outcomes, I love that, we'll keep looking at prevalence data. The reality is that we know that folks are either late onset of mental health, underdiagnosed, misdiagnosed, untreated. Those are all things, right, that are, that are facts. And that could be showing up in whether it's the prevalence data or other, other places. We, we're, we will soon be sharing with you a little more about the needs assessment survey from last summer. And, and comparing that to other reports that are out there. Some things that struck me, you know, 53% in, from whichever report I was reading the other day, and I'll find you the source, of folks don't, older adults don't actually seek support. That's, that's, that in itself sets up this conversation for making sure that we're where people are. And then part two, folks are only going to loved ones, right? And, and so accessing other care networks and other resources are automatically a place where we're going to find some challenges. So this is why, thank you Doc, for, for sharing your personal story earlier, it's so important that we spend time with caregivers. You've heard Commissioner talk about caregiving before and all of us, right? Like today is actually the birthday of my, one of my aunts who passed away recently and had rapid cognitive decline in her last few months with us. And so preparing caregivers and the caregiver in her life was my other aunt, who's a bonus mom, and she, she's 80, well, I don't know, she wants to be telling her age, but I'll do it anyway. She's 80, she's 83 and her sister was 86. And so it's really important as we talk about mental health and who and where we are, it's not just in our centers, it's making sure that we're everywhere. Especially for caregivers, and I don't need to, I don't need to tell you that, but it's really important for everyone here. That is a place where we need to go also to reduce stigma.
Absolutely. And, you know, since we're, we're on the topic and Councilmember Mealy brought this up as well, I do want to just ask, you know, one of the fastest growing populations is homeless older adults. And so I'm wondering too if there's, because I'd imagine there has to be some sort of overlap perhaps with mental health diagnoses and people who might be newly experiencing homelessness. And so I'm just wondering if there are specific efforts to address that in some of the clinics, in some of these older adult centers? How people are being connected to resources and, and services in that way too? From like a preventive perspective.
Yeah, I'll start and then jump in. So I, I think it's important what you're saying in terms of several things. One is the stigma. And so having workshops and focus groups is one area that when we talk about the disparities as an example. So we've had over 50 So we've had over 54 workshops and over six focus groups for 50 years old and older, for older, for black participants specifically, in terms of how they understand the information that is being given out there. And so some of the information we've received in terms of key insights, current communications, are we communicating in a way that a person can actually receive the information? Think about it, if it's just on the website, that's gonna exclude some folks, right? If it's just being handed out in a pamphlet, that's gonna exclude some folks. So we really need to understand how people receive information. So that's the kind of feedback that you get when you have focus groups. I think also looking at stigma, denial and shame, and looking at the lack of awareness are key barriers, but you also have to understand is, who's having the conversation? Are they credible messengers, as an example? You know, we talked about peers earlier, and so that's very, very important. When you think about where individuals are gonna get this information, going to some of these mental health clinics, Chair Lee's favorite, Clubhouses, right? That's, you know, a lot of the individuals are 55 and older that, you know, but they're with serious mental illness. 55% of the folks that are in our supportive housing are seniors. And so that's a resource in terms of how to get connected. When you think about all those things, it's a multi-pronged approach in terms of, one, how do we communicate? How do we get the information to individuals? What is, what are the things we're hearing and that we can implement immediately? And then how do we meet people where they are so that, we can't just talk about stigma, we also have to talk about inclusion. And I think you can't have one conversation without the other.
Thank you.
Covered it. The other thing I would say is that frankly, our provider network is so critically important here. You know, we don't just have older adult center operators, these are nonprofits who are embedded in community and multi-service often, or have really strong ties. I'm already thinking about like folks at Encore, Project Find, you know, others that run supportive housing, operators who also have older adult centers, right? That's, it's important to make sure that we continue to support the nonprofits in this case, who are there and are the front lines of responding to all these needs, right? And, you know, Department of Social Services isn't here today, but we spent a lot of time making sure that whether it is with their supportive housing or Adult Protective Service and others, they're at the front lines of this in terms of outreach. Folks have aged in place on the streets, are known to the providers in the community who are doing outreach, and have moved people more quickly into supportive housing in the past few years. So spot on. More to be done.
That's good to know. Thank you. Are DIFDA's mental health programs reaching LGBTQA plus older New Yorkers? And do you have any, any data on those aging alone or disconnected from traditional family support?
We could follow up on that specifically in terms of data, but yes, we are reaching LGBT community members. And, you know, we have programs that are run by LGBT community organizations as well. Thinking about Sage as one example for, that it has a, both older adult center and caregiver. They, they are not operating a DJMH program, but our operators will work closely with many of the, the program providers. So yes is the short answer for data, because it's an intricate question. I'll be happy to follow up.
Okay. Sounds good. Thank you. How have the fiscal year, I'm gonna go into budget and contracts for a second, okay? Or for a few minutes, rather. How have the fiscal year 2024 and 2025 pegs impacted funding for DIFDA's mental health services, particularly for staff contracts and outreach initiatives?
They haven't.
Okay. At all?
No.
Okay. How long did it take to implement the most recent RFP for expanded DJMH services?
Do you mean how long it took to develop the RFP itself?
Um, no. To award it?
What I'll say is, yeah, I'm trying to get to the spirit of the question. The pilot was 2016, as we shared before, and we've expanded the program twice. And the expansion that was, so if you are doing the math from 2016 to 2022, that's one timeline, but in terms of the RFP development process, I'm happy to come back to you on like actual timelines from, from that, when it was released to when the provider was selected to when they started, if, that you want to talk concrete procurement timelines, I'm happy to figure that out.
Okay. That would be great. Thank you.
Kind of gets a little bit to Councilmember Emili's kind of question, how long does it take to do an RFP?
Yeah. What additional investments are needed to scale services like PACS, HB and Teleprotect to meet the demand among homebound older adults?
I, I think I hinted at this earlier. Telehealth itself is the thing that we need to spend time on, right? And it is available today in our, in our programs in terms of folks who might be homebound, and there's much more that we can do there. I think there've been a number of models in the world, Protect being one, and we're actively trying to look at what are those emerging models that are best suited? And how do we increase our capacity? I think I just, while there, there are many specialist organizations out there right now, like in, some are here, some are probably watching at home, one thing that's important to this, to, to Commissioner and me, is making sure that we are deepening our bench and that, you know, we, you, you were asking questions earlier, Councilmember, about the folks in centers, right? It is so important that while even if there aren't clinicians in centers, peers or otherwise, the people who are operating have that capacity to engage compassionately, know where the resources are, that's why we spend time training. So there, I would say what's important is actual training, it's actually deepening the models and documenting, that's what's important for those models.
Thank you. And what's the plan for sustaining DOJ or OMH funded mental health pilot programs when grant funding ends?
Well, like with most, we will, the world of grants is different, Chair. And, and you know, we-
And that's why I'm asking-
I, I, I know. Look, I, I think we have, we're pleased with new developments like, you know, the JFNA funding, right? That's a foundation. And so we are continuing to, our development team with our, our program team, look for opportunities out there where we can, you know, shift what we're doing, and thank you for the reminder. You know, we have a new program called Boost, which again, we're looking for other models, right? That, that's, that will be supporting older adults, whether it's telehealth or survivors of, of violence and abuse. We continue to do development work on our side. Where we can integrate clients with the existing core DJMH programs, we're also doing that.
Thank you. How does DIFDA evaluate the effectiveness of its mental health programs?
I shared some stats with you before in terms of, you know, looking three months after, you know, and the initial clinical sessions begin, and as you, you heard, from 20% to 60%, thereabouts, improvements in various metrics. That's the kind of research that we're doing, impact research we're doing internally. You should also know that we're, you know, we had recently a pitch fest that we participated in, which was like looking for research partners. So thank you to, if any of you are here, there are like eight researchers who are interested in partnering with us to evaluate some of the impact of our programs. And one of them is on the impact of older adult center programming on cognitive well-being of older adults, right? Like not just mental health programs, but all programs. And the other one is implementing STEAM, like Science, Technology, Engineering, Arts and Math Programming. So we are actively, I know we respond to some of the university partnerships, but we're actively looking to deepen what we know, understand and are able to do. And older adults in community are asking for it as well.
Thank you. Do you collect client feedback for each of your mental health initiatives?
I am seeing a nod here that says not for each, but I can tell you some of the, probably get back to you with some-
The nod I saw was a no.
Yeah.
But go ahead and tell me.
Not for each.
Okay, okay.
I, I knew what that meant. We do get feedback.
As agencies speak over there.
Yeah, yeah. Not for, I'm responding to your question. Not for each, based on, I, I think how that's structured with the clinician and, and so on, but we are evaluating the programs and in some of our areas. So we didn't spend much time talking about our elder justice programs. We are often surveying and getting feedback from clients as they, you know, have benefited from our services. So not for each program for a variety of reasons, but that is our practice and our, our goal.
Okay. Thank you. And what are the three greatest unmet mental health needs of older New Yorkers according to providers?
That is a, you want me to rank right now, huh? Here, here's what I, I, I will say. I will join Dr. Doctor in, in acknowledging that we need to continuously invest in staff. That's documented well throughout. Build those partnerships from social work schools and other settings to ensure that we have capacity within our networks to, to provide services and pay folks well, right? That's, 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 that's part of what we need to do. In terms of mental health needs, I think the stigma piece, again, well documented, folks are not thinking, let me go get my mental health checkup. Maybe folks are going to the dentist twice, not once. Absolutely, folks are going for their annual checkups. So I think routinizing mental health care and wellness is, is, is also a major top three.
Yeah.
And then I, I think the, the third is screening, once we get past the, this is a part of it, like really, what do I do when and if I feel or if the doctor or if the clinician tells me? And I think that's why the DJMH program is, continues to be important, because it provides onsite, in community access and navigation support to individuals so that they can actually get care.
Thank you. I want to ask a couple of questions about my bill, which would require the Cabinet for older New Yorkers to study and report on the provision of agency services to older adults with certain neurological and mental health conditions. Does a city currently track older adults with neurological or mental health conditions across city agencies? So like, you know, if HRA, if somebody is interfacing with HRA as an example, and somebody in HRA somewhere is like, you know what, this person might have Alzheimer's disease, are they then sharing at least, we've had 10 people that have come through our agency with DOHMH to say, or even NYC Aging to say, hey, just FYI, or maybe you want to know, or maybe you have programs or services or resources that might be relevant to this person who we've already interacted with?
So Chair, I can't speak to that level of detail in terms of the communication between agencies, but I can certainly find out what communication is occurring. In terms of tracking neurological data, we do have our unit of health equity that I mentioned earlier, they mainly focus on dementias specifically. And so it's a fairly new unit, and so I can certainly get back to you in any detail in that regard. But in terms of internal cross-system amongst other city agencies, I, I can't speak to that today.
I, yeah, and that's, that's fair. I think generally, we could probably all agree that there isn't enough inter-agency discussion, coordination, collaboration, and this is probably across all government entities, not just here in New York City. So just, you know, want to, want to note that for all of us. How would DOHMH work to identify the top 10 neurological and mental health conditions affecting older adults? And what might the anticipated timeline for something like that be?
I can't speak to the timeline, but what I would say is the way we gather other information is through Epi briefs and surveys. Community surveys, also talking to our providers would be a way to gather that information. Do not have a specific timeline that I can give you today.
Okay. And what criteria would DOHMH use to determine the most common conditions? For example, incidence, prevalence, impact on service use, or another metric?
Repeat the question, I'm sorry, Chair.
What criteria would DOHMH use to determine the most common conditions? For example, incidence, like rate of incidence, prevalence, the impact on service use, or perhaps another metric?
Understood. And so again, by using the Epi data briefs and the surveillance that we do, we would be able to rank them in that regard.
Okay. One other just sort of anecdotal piece that I'd like to offer is, you know, in my office, we've been contacted by a number of constituents who have neighbors. They're calling essentially on behalf of their neighbors. And usually the, the story goes, I have a neighbor, Ms. Jones, she's lived next door to me or across the street from me for the last 20, 30 years. She's now, you know, in the hallways late at night or outside, she's ringing my bell late at night, she's making these claims that don't seem to make sense. You know, things like that, or maybe she's walking down the street, you know, in her nightgown, which I've never seen her do before. For me, because I have personal experience with Alzheimer's disease and the early stages and, and how it can present, you know, I usually think, well, maybe this person has some form of dementia. We've also had cases where the, the police department has been involved in folks making these sort of very elaborate claims about their neighbors and come to find out, when you do a little bit more digging, they do have dementia. But because they're socially isolated, because they may not have any next of kin, and because their neighbors and even the NYPD may not be familiar with these types of, you know, symptoms, then, you know, they're obviously not really getting the type of help they need. I mean, we've gone to doctor's appointments with people before, just because they have nobody to sort of advocate or even confirm or get the information so that we can then help them get access to the types of resources that they may be qualified for. So I just wanted to share that because I think there's so many opportunities for us to be doing a lot more in terms of how we're supporting every, you know, New Yorker who might be experiencing something like this that doesn't have the support systems, who may not be going to older adult centers or drop-in clinics or anything like that. And so just thinking about how do we actually get the word out? How do we share information? You know, I've, I have legislation trying to make the NYPD, you know, get training on how to spot Alzheimer's and dementia and things like that. But, you know, I don't know if you have any thoughts or anything to share, but it would be, you know, really great for us to all sort of think together and collaboratively about how do we, especially with the growing older adult population, you know, and, and assuming that these types of diseases might become more prevalent, how do we actually address some of the folks with these?
So first and foremost, first, thank you for that, that, that sharing. I would start with 988, right? And so we need to do much, much more in terms of, when I say us as a collective, as a city, to make sure that people understand that 988 could be for someone who just needs someone to talk to all the way through, you know, having some major challenges, all the way to being suicidal, that, you know, the, the continuum is that great. And so the vast majority could be helped by calling 988. There's gonna be a clinician readily available to talk to them on the phone, and if necessary, a mobile team, a crisis mobile team will be deployed. And then that team will then assess the individual, and they would be experts clinically to find out what we're really dealing with. Your average neighbor probably doesn't know that, as you just pointed out. And so if you're not sure about 911 or 988, call 988 and let us assist you in that way. That's probably not the time to call police, because you don't, you're not paying attention to seeing any, you know, public safety issue as an example. Nine times out of 10, people who make calls are calling about something they've observed, a person, family member, as you put it, neighbor. They're not usually calling about themselves necessarily. So that's another reason that if you're observing something, to call 988 first and then let those professionals take it from there and then get you connected as whatever is needed. They know what to do.
Thank you for that.
I think it's also important to, to go back to why the cabinet exists, right, Chair? Which is to strengthen information sharing at all access points. And so 988, absolutely. Some folks are gonna continue to call 911 and the precinct is gonna show up. And that's why it was important for us to establish a liaison, older adult liaison in every precinct, right? And so now I can say that nearly 40,000 members of service and civilians have been trained. However, boosters are needed, right? And this is, there's always gonna be more to be done here. And I think maybe we could consider looking at what a partnership looks like to, to zero in on some of these issues that are showing up in community. We literally had a call a couple of weeks ago, this, this kind of exact call, where we got the person who oversees all the older adult liaisons on the phone, they got the liaison to go- they got the liaison to go down with some people from the precinct, and APS got involved for, because there was a hoarding situation and a few other things going on, and that person got a pathway to, to care. But they've received multiple calls up until that point. It just happened to finally get to the right structure. And so we need to strengthen our access points, whether it's the hospitals, or it's the police department, or anywhere else, so that we're all speaking the same language. And you said it earlier around geriatrics, right? We need to get, make sure we deepen that practice. So I think we could spend more time evolving the training that everyone's taken, so that they're better positioned to act.
Thank you. I'm going to throw it back over to Chair Lee for some additional questions. Thank you.
Sorry, just one last bucket around the substance use and opioids. So the reports have shown that substance use, especially those 65 and older, has increased in recent years. And can you just speak to whether those rates have changed since the pandemic? And if so, how?
Thank you for your question, Chair Lee. Before I answer that question, let me give you the answer to your question you'd asked earlier about depression. And so it did increase slightly from the 9% that was quoted earlier.
Okay.
But it's at 12% for older adults, which is still slightly lower than the rest of New Yorkers, which was 13%. So you were correct, it was slightly elevated, but only at 12% compared to 9%, and compared to the rest of New York, which was 13%.
Okay.
In terms of your question specific to overdose, and so as you probably remember from our previous hearing, although the rates have, of overdose had declined very slightly for all of New York, for black and brown New Yorkers, it has increased. And so in specific ge- geographic areas, we're talking in terms of the Bronx, and East Harlem, and other areas that I'm blanking on right now. But in terms of the comparison to previous, you said the pandemic, yes, they have increased quite a bit. And so that is a major concern for us at the Health Department, and so we certainly are taking that information very seriously and working with our partners across the city to make sure, one, we address those exactly in the vulnerable communities that it exists, but also talking to our community providers to make sure that we have an understanding that what are we, what are we doing to address those issues? And so we're taking it very seriously.
Okay, perfect. Um, given the rise in substance-related mortality among older New Yorkers, does DOHMH differentiate and report on substance misuse patterns, like using prescription opioids versus illicit opioids for the older adult population?
We do, and that's part of the surveillance data that is gathered and published.
Just, and maybe this is more anecdotal from your perspective, and, and there isn't any clear data, but I'm, I'm just curious to know, are the, the older adults who are engaged in substance use, are they because they're people who are aging that have been using? Or are we seeing a, a more prevalence of older adults that are maybe new users?
If I'm understanding your correct, your question, I would say I cannot speak to whether they are new users or not. What I can say is that we are tracking the type of substance, and generally, individuals have a history of substance use for a period of time.
Okay. Thank you.
And just lastly, does DOHMH work with or consult with citywide harm reduction programs to ensure integration of age-appropriate screenings and referrals for older adults who suffer from addiction?
We do.
Okay. So groups like On Point and others, so you coordinate with them?
Absolutely.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Okay, sorry, and I just had one last question about the legislation. If the Cabinet for older New Yorkers is not the ideal forum for developing the report required by Intro 1257, as you state in your testimony, Executive Deputy Commissioner, how would you ensure through this legislation that all relevant agencies weigh in on how to improve the provision of services to older adults with neurological and mental health conditions?
I would say that, that, that is part, thinking of the Cabinet as action-oriented and looking at sustainability, I would imagine that what we would do here is, with the Health Department, HNH, Office of Community Mental Health, and others who are always active in the Cabinet, that we prioritize these conversations. As I mentioned earlier, you know, the agencies are the ones who do the work. So the Cabinet itself doesn't just issue reports. Like, we have our set needs assessment data that's coming out, and through the Bold Coalition, there is work that's going to be done as a part of strategic planning. And so those are already reports that should be available. I would think that through the Cabinet, one of the things that we commit to, as we always do, is thinking about the initiatives that go into this, right? Like, the, what we would actually do, whether it's, I don't know, we talked about training for a little bit just now, and making sure that all frontline staff, so we already have one of those initiatives, but maybe there's a focus in terms of content, a new module, something in person, some, some commissioners' rounds, maybe, bring some experts to the table. I think that's the kind of thing that the Cabinet does, and that we'd be more than happy to advance.
Thank you so much. Thank you both for your testimonies and for answering all of our questions. I'm going to move on to public testimony. So, thank you, we appreciate your time. Okay. All right, I now open the hearing for public testimony. I want to remind members of the public that this is a government proceeding, and that decorum shall be observed at all times. As such, members of the public shall remain silent at all times. The witness table is reserved for people who wish to testify. No video recording or photography is allowed from the witness table. Further, members of the public may not present audio or video recordings as testimony, but may submit transcripts of such recordings to the Sergeant-at-Arms for inclusion in the hearing record. If you wish to speak at today's hearing, please fill out an appearance card with the Sergeant-at-Arms and wait to be recognized. When recognized, you will have two minutes to speak on the oversight topic, mental health in older New Yorkers, or on Introduction 1257, Proposed Resolution 106A, Resolution 736, or Resolution 852. If you have a written statement or additional written testimony you wish to submit for the record, please provide a copy of that testimony to the Sergeant-at-Arms. You may also email written testimony to testimony@council.nyc.gov within 72 hours of this hearing. Audio and video recordings will not be accepted. And I will start momentarily with, okay, panel one. Jordana Weber, thank you, Kumari Cruz, Fiona O'Grady, and Anita Kwak.
Good afternoon. I am Jordana Weber, Chief Program Officer of Service Program for Older People, or SPAP. Thank you Chairs Hudson and Lee for holding this oversight hearing on the subject of mental health in older New Yorkers. I'm grateful for this opportunity to address the two committees today. SPAP plays a unique role in supporting the health and emotional wellbeing and independence of older adults, and has done so for more than 45 years. We are the only agency in the city that is exclusively dedicated to community-based mental health care for older adults. We provide outpatient treatment to over 1,000 people each year through individual and group therapy, assessments, medication management, and psychiatric rehabilitation. We understand that older adults may face multiple barriers to mental health care, and we have developed strategic partnerships with older adult centers, hospitals, and other community-based organizations that connect us to those who might otherwise have no access. We have also built a network of 20 service locations and satellites, seven of which are DGMH sites, in Manhattan, Brooklyn, and the Bronx, where clients can receive mental health care at the same place they receive aging support services. Chair Hudson, to an earlier question, SPAP also has three LGBT-specific sites. We were especially proud when NYC Aging adopted SPAP's co-location treatment model to integrate mental health care into older adult centers. Education is central to our mission, and we share our expertise with other organizations and professionals that work with older adults. We teach the ins and outs of Medicare billing, which ultimately expands the provider pool. In other cases, we provide workforce training on such topics as older adult substance use, trauma, or suicidality. And Chair Lee, to one of your earlier questions, SPAP also is in year two of a social work career pathway, bringing MSW interns into the older adult mental health orbit. Perhaps our most important role, however, is advocating on behalf of older adults with mental health needs. Our goal is to increase access to treatment throughout the city, and we believe that older New Yorkers deserve to have the entire city on their side. But while we love what we do, we can't be the only ones doing it. I'm here today to express SPAP's enthusiastic support for Introduction Number 1257, which focuses on the identification of the leading neurological and mental health conditions affecting older adults. We believe that this bill will call attention to healthcare needs and impact decisions affecting policy and service delivery options. Clear data can inform a strategy to address those healthcare needs. Through our work, we have seen the despair that ensues when a person's needs increase as their financial resources dwindle, which only exacerbates their mental health or neurological condition. This bill recognizes the need for all city agencies to come together in order to support our most vulnerable New Yorkers, not just those that provide mental health and aging services, but across the sectors represented in the Cabinet. We share the Council's aims to make New York City a great place to grow old. If a city defines its worth by the way it treats older adults, then this bill may bring us closer to that goal. To that end, greater investments to support the mental health needs of older New Yorkers are critically needed in the budget. Thank you for your work on behalf of all older New Yorkers and for this opportunity to testify.
Thank you so much.
Thank you Chairs Hudson, thank you Chairs Hudson and Lee for convening today's joint hearing on older adults and mental health. My name is Anita Kwak, a policy analyst representing United Neighborhood Houses, a policy and advocacy organization representing New York Settlement Houses. Our, our members provide a wide variety of services to over 800,000 New Yorkers each year by operating programs in areas such as older adult and behavior mental health services. Many older adults served by Settlement Houses are low-income immigrants with limited access to food, housing, healthcare, and mental health services. Language barriers and mental health stigma further prevent them from seeking support. Settlement staff, Settlement House staff are essential to the community, assisting older adults in navigating complex welfare systems, such as benefits, enrollment, and access to care. UNH is a longtime supporter of the Council's older adult mental health initiative. It makes mental health services accessible by putting them in community spaces where older adults already gather, such as senior centers, nurks, and food pantries. It increases the capacity of CBOs serving older adults in identifying mental health needs, providing immediate mental health interventions, and referring clients to further psychiatric treatment when necessary. With recipients of this funding observing rising levels of social isolation, bereavement, and fear among immigrant populations, CBOs are able to meet their clients where they're at, which are often in non-clinical settings like churches, which Chair Lee mentioned during questioning. Given the vast success of this program, we urge the Council to restore full funding to the older adult mental health initiative of $3.5 million in FY26, which includes a 3% COLA to match the citywide human services COLA. Our members have also observed an increase in fear among older adult immigrant populations because of the anti-immigrant rhetoric and policies by the new federal administration. Furthermore, unpredictable federal policy proposals have placed additional strain on aging services providers. Earlier this year, a proposed elimination of social service security phone services would have forced millions of, of older adults to seek in-person help, even as staffing was being cut. Settlement House staff scrambled to prepare for surgeon-client needs. And although this policy was rescinded, ongoing SSA staff cuts and frequent website outages continue to make accessing services difficult, compounding the, the burden on frontline providers. UNH urges the Council to pass Councilmember Shaker Krishnan's Resolution 852, calling on the US Congress and the President to take steps to protect Social Security. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. Thank you both for your testimonies. Okay, I'll call the next panel, Chelsea Rose, Janine Cahill Jackson, Navdeep Bains, and Emma Basir. Anyone can begin, and then we'll just go down the line.
Hi, and thank you for the opportunity to testify today on the topic of mental health in older adults, and to the Chairs for hosting this, for holding this important hearing. My name is Emma Basir, and I am the Senior Associate of Policy and Advocacy, representing City Meals on Wheels. The issue of mental health is of particularly importance for city meals due to the heightened rates of social isolation that older adults who are homebound experience and the consequences of that. Numerous studies have found a link between being homebound and not just social isolation, but depression, and a broad range of medical and psychological conditions, as Chair Lee mentioned earlier in this hearing. In a recent study of over 500 older New Yorkers participating in congregate and home-delivered meal programs, we learned that not only half were experiencing food insecurity, but more than 50% lived alone. We also learned about their mental health concerns and their access to support, such as that 38% of participants reported that loneliness and depression were problems for them. And yet, a staggering 82% never accessed mental health services. 45% reported having little to no support from family, friends, or a personal care attendant for meals, which suggests that they may not have that same support for other types of needs that they have. A majority also live on $15,000 a year or less annually, and 25% reported not knowing about general support services available to them. These data suggest that not only is there a need for programs that address depression, loneliness, and other psychological conditions among older adults, especially those who are homebound, but that there's also a gap in existing supports and access to them. We urge the Council to restore full funding to the Geriatric Mental Health Initiative at $3.5 million in FY26. The initiative provides critical screenings, referrals, counseling, and more, and it's vital to meeting older adults where they're most comfortable and fulfilling their mental health needs. The virtual and telephonic options are particularly critical for homebound older adults who may not regularly attend an OAC or have access to in-person mental health services, but can be referred through their case manager. A further investment at $800 million is also needed in order to address critical infrastructure issues at older adult centers across the city. Older adults deserve to access mental health services and centers that are accessible and in good repair, and we thank the Council for their efforts to support the mental health of older adults through this hearing, and urge you to adequately fund the programs older adults so desperately need.
Thank you so much.
Thank you Chair Kristal Hudson and the Committee on Aging, as well as Chair Lynda Lee and the Committee on Mental Health, Disabilities, and Addiction for holding this hearing and for giving us the opportunity to testify about the mental health needs of older New Yorkers. I'm Navdeep Bains, Associate Director of Advocacy and Policy at the Asian American Federation, where we proudly represent the voice, the collective voice, of more than 70-member nonprofit organizations serving 1.5 million Asian New Yorkers. As the Asian community faces a challenging landscape due to federal funding cuts and anti-immigration policies, our older adults are placed at the center of this issue, with the intersection of race and age rendering them particularly vulnerable. While our member organizations on the ground continue providing high-quality mental health care, this increased demand, coupled with challenges obtaining and retaining culturally and linguistically competent staff, has resulted in increased strain on our CBOs. Without these essential nonprofit organizations and their life-saving direct services, our older adults would experience increased adverse mental health outcomes. Asian older adults are the fastest-growing older adult community citywide, making up 14% of New York City's senior population, and this population growth has been coupled with an increase in poverty. Currently, 42% of Asian seniors are low-income, and more over 25% of Asian seniors experiencing poverty live alone, and 84% have limited English language proficiency. This results in a high likelihood that they would experience isolation and loneliness, and these are key issues that our CBOs on the ground address daily, with the support of City Council for sure. The topic of today's hearing is particularly important to AAF, as we convene the seniors' working group and a mental health roundtable. They're both working groups that we get together with our CBOs, doing this work on the ground, and they represent the voice of 12, or over a dozen different CBOs, serving over a dozen different Asian ethnicities in the community. So we're in support of City Council's measures discussed today, and we've been longtime supporters of Chair Kristal Hudson's Age in Place legislative package, including the, the proposed local law that was discussed today. We also support Resolution 106, because programs like this protect seniors from never-ending rent hikes in a time of economic crisis and threats to social safety net programs, as well as Social Security. Expanding the eligibility of this program, which is the Disability Rent Increase Exemption Program, to include additional qualifying members, will help seniors in the Asian community from facing immense hardship and from facing immense hardship and stress, such as eviction and houselessness, and it would also help their family members that are also experiencing vulnerable situations. I just want to also mention that we are in support of Councilmember Krishnan's Resolution 852, because many members of the Asian community rely on Social Security to pay for basic necessities like groceries, utility bills, and housing. And for our older adults, this is the only source of income that they can rely on. And protecting Social Security will not only provide a steady source of income to our Asian seniors, but will also prevent worsening mental health crises from stress and anxiety. One of our member organizations that serves a community in Brooklyn says that Social Security cuts for seniors has been a major topic at their senior center and older adult center, and their attorneys in-house are doing workshops and trainings for the community because they're confused on what they qualify for and what might be cut and cause increased poverty. So just thank you so much to the council for supporting AAF's older adult initiative so we can continue to do advocacy, research, and programming work on this area, as well as our immigration rapid response work, which we're hoping to continue to get support from and do well into the next year, because the needs are continuing to grow. Thank you so much.
Absolutely. Thank you so much.
Good afternoon. My name is Chelsea Rose, and I serve as the Policy and Advocacy Manager at Care for the Homeless. I want to thank the committee members for the opportunity to testify today. CFH has over 40 years of experience delivering medical and behavioral health care exclusively to people experiencing homelessness in New York City. We operate 22 federally qualified health centers, in shelters, drop-in centers, and soup kitchens, and we also run five shelters with onsite health services. Across our programs, our goal is to end homelessness by providing supportive services that help people move into stable housing. Today, I want to focus on a specific and growing population within New York City shelter system: older adults living with serious mental and cognitive disabilities and requiring a higher level of care than what is available in shelters. Facilities that could support them, such as adult homes, assisted living, and nursing homes, are frequently inaccessible. Many reject applicants with psychiatric diagnoses or don't have space. Even those who are clinically eligible can wait years for placement. In the meantime, too many aging and disabled New Yorkers remain in the shelter system, receiving fragmented and insufficient care. Residents at one of our shelters describe watching older women cycle endlessly between emergency rooms and shelters, struggling with basic daily activities like bathing, eating, and dressing. They've watched their mental health and physical health deteriorate in real time as they were living in a system that was not built for them. The following are some of their testimonials. Residents are acting as nurses for each other to keep them from going back into the hospital. "Before entering the shelter system, I had a home aide that helped me bathe and take care of myself. Now I can't take showers because I can't bathe on my own. I go into the hospital like a revolving door, and then they send me right back here." These stories are not isolated. Without better pathways to long-term care, more aging New Yorkers will be trapped in systems that fail them. Without stability, without care, and without dignity, this is not only a policy failure, but a moral one. Thank you very much for your time and for your commitment to the health, safety, and dignity of all New Yorkers.
Thank you so much. Right on time.
Good afternoon, Chair Hudson and Chair Lee and members of the committee. I'm Janine Cahill Jackson, Director of the Elder Law Unit with the Legal Aid Society, and I'm here today with many of my colleagues from the Bronx Neighborhood Office. Legal Aid is in support of all of the proposed bills and resolutions on the agenda today. But the one I wanted to focus in on my spoken testimony is the introduction of proposed Bill 1257, 2005. This is a very important study. We first suggest that the cabinet should speak to legal services providers and other CBOs in addition to the other city agencies, because these folks work with seniors with neurological and mental health conditions on a daily basis and are very familiar with helping them try to access the city services that we might be, the cabinet might be seeking to find the issues with them being able to connect with. In our work, we encounter seniors with mental health conditions, as well as cognitive decline, and they often struggle to access services. The one that really stands out the most to me is seniors with hoarding disorder. Adult Protective Services is the only organization that can help them with this, but the only service that's provided for these seniors is called a deep clean, which is a rather traumatic removal of all of their possessions. It's actually not in line with any trauma-informed or client-centered treatment. There's no supportive services, mental health services provided for the senior, nor any other alternatives, such as decluttering, and the power, the process is traumatic at worst and disempowering at best. In addition, folks with cognitive decline also struggle to access APS services. For example, they have to not only hear the knock on the door, understand to open it, and then be able to engage with the caseworker, but if they're not home at the time, the onus is put on them to connect through calling the caseworker by understanding the number on the business card. May I continue with just a few more points? Thank you. So this process is very hard for the seniors to understand, and even to remember to do if they have short-term memory issues. Additionally, and I believe this came up earlier in the hearing, if the seniors experiencing Alzheimer's or dementia, they may not present as having cognitive decline, but in fact be demonstrating it through what they're sharing. So recently, we had a client that was denied for adult protective services a few times because he so clearly explained that every month, he writes out a check and puts it in the landlord's drop box, and that he was able to go grocery shopping, et cetera, but in fact, he hadn't had food in the fridge for months and hadn't paid rent in over five years. But he wasn't aware he was not accurately reporting. And there was no further investigation. The case was closed after that initial assessment done in the apartment. On paper, it seems possibly it could be sufficient, but often, a little bit more investigation is needed, perhaps verifying with collateral resources, like family members, or even the neighbors that you were referencing. Just to help see, is this someone telling the story of them managing their affairs or explaining to you how they used to be able to, and they don't know that they're no longer able to? So I will conclude with that last example. We will be providing written testimony to also address, there are a few issues with even accessing city PEPs renewals or accessing the process for accessoride. So we'll definitely be sure to include some client examples there in our written testimony. Thank you so much for your time today.
Thank you all so much for your testimonies. And just one second, I know Chair Lee has a question.
So, actually, two questions for each of you. So for Chelsea, 22 FQHCs is no small feat. That's a lot of work, and I can't, like, I can just imagine how many people you have going in and out of the health centers. I was just wondering if you could speak more to, because I think the biggest frustration, or at least my biggest pet peeve, and I'm sure for Chair Hudson as well, is the silos that we have in government and how we, it's hard to move people through the system and throughout different services. So I just was curious to hear more about how you all are integrating the model, and if you could speak more to that in terms of how you're doing the FQHC, you know, clinics. And, you know, I know that you have, it says you have the separate shelters, and so how are you sort of integrating the care for that?
Yeah, so we co-locate in the majority of those, of the 22 federally qualified health centers. Besides the five shelters that we run, it's partnerships with other organizations, and we do soup kitchens, drop-in centers, wherever people experiencing homelessness are already accessing. And then depending on the population we're serving there, for example, like assessment sites, or sites that are more focused on getting chronically street homeless individuals off the street, that care is going to be more short-term, getting them stabilized and integrated into the shelter system. Whereas at our shelters, we're able to provide more long-term care. Ultimately, the goal is to get them to regularly go to, like, primary care and dentistry and behavioral health appointments. But due to, you know, cuts coming down from the federal government, and just generally in this sector, we, we struggle with, like, staff retainment and maintaining these health centers and good quality care that, depending on the shelter and the number of staff we have onboard, our health centers do struggle to maintain that, the quality of care that I think many people, especially older adults in our shelter system, need. And ultimately, it's by their appointment base for many of these health centers. So for the individuals I spoke to, to inform this testimony, these are individuals that need care 24/7. They need reminders to take their medication, help bathing, and that is not something our health centers, and with the partnerships with our shelters, that's not like a service that we necessarily can provide.
And then, do you also have any other contracts for the street mobile outreach teams? Because I could see how that would be a great transition into your services as well.
Yeah, we do have some outreach teams, and I'm happy to talk more in detail about, like, our various sites and how each of them works. But yeah, we do have some street outreach that focuses on bringing people into assessment sites and drop-in sites and whatnot.
Perfect. And then, just really quickly for Janine, right? Okay. I'm just curious to hear, what would your recommendation be for this? Because there's only, as you said, one program to really just declutter, but that's not addressing the actual issue, right? And so have there been recommendations from different advocacy groups that have said, hey, if you were to create this agency, or if we were to integrate some other models within, like, for example, DSS? Or what have been some of the recommendations that you all have suggested?
So, I can't speak to whether or not they've been the recommendations have been formally made, but, and I can, so I can get the actual name of the different kind of therapeutic models and things like that, and include it in my written testimony. But basically, I don't, in theory, this could happen under Adult Protective Services as well. So currently, if somebody is hoarding in the apartment, they, it's called a deep clean, and what it is, is it's just a junk removal service that comes in. I mean, not just, it's a big feat for the individuals to do that work, but we're also speaking about mental health diagnoses, and hoarding disorder is a clinically recognized mental health diagnosis. So there isn't any treatment provided or even clinical assessment. Well, perhaps there might be a clinical assessment in the psychiatric evaluation, but there isn't the related treatment for the individual, nor is the, what's carried out clinically informed, right? So they go in and they remove all of the individual's belongings, they can flag, you know, a couple of nominal things that they want to save, but there are other processes that are more clinically informed. So, one, there could be actual mental health support for the individual throughout the process, because it's very traumatic. Like, so there's often underlying trauma that leads people to hoard, or loss, grief, things like that, and that, so it's often like a manifestation of something that they've already gone through. Then the process itself is traumatic, and then there's no ongoing support for them, so they also run the risk to hoard again, and again have all of their possessions taken from them. And if they don't, then they face either eviction, because that's often when we're seeing them, there's a holdover case, they're in housing court facing eviction. So it's either lose your home and end up in the shelter, or give up all your possessions. And unless you have a lot of means, so there are also companies that do work with clinicians, and you have to pay $5,000, $10,000, $10,000. So you have to be a person of means to even engage with these companies. At times, we have tried to secure funding for particular clients for this, but again, if we're a nonprofit legal services provider looking to find outside funding for $10,000, that's a really sizable amount of money. So it's really not, you know, available to a lot of low-income New Yorkers. Thank you.
Thank you all. Okay, the next panel is Ronald Johnson, Fiona O'Grady, Kumari Cruz, and Christopher Leon Johnson.
They all came together, huh? Oh, these are all the Bronx people, she was saying. Yeah, they came.
Yeah, because I got these. I know, it's kind of, can I go?
Go for it.
Yeah, hello Chairs Hudson and Lee. Thank you for having us here today. I'm here to show my support for Chair Krishnan's bill, and the reason I'm showing my support is because we have to make sure that the people that live in on Social Security does not get their money cut. I have a big feeling that Donald Trump, who is our president, is doing this because he want to fund ICE. Well, at the same time, the reason I'm showing these posters, I hope I don't get, don't be caught off topic, is because of that, we have to make sure that ICE does not get funded with federal money. I'm calling the city council to make sure that they work together, they work with the Speaker to Trump-proof New York City. I know you could Trump-proof New York State, but you could Trump-proof New York City by making sure that, that Social Security is funded, no matter what happens. You could take some of this money out and help, you should make budgets to fund these older people. We have to make sure that we stand with our migrants, we have to stand with our migrants, because this is nothing but to hurt immigrants. They take his money out of Social Security just to fund ICE so they can deport the migrants, deport good migrants, not the bad ones, just only the good ones. So I'm calling the city council to really come forward and Trump-proof New York City, stand with our migrants. And one more thing about the mental health situation, what we need to do is to put an initiative, like, a subcommittee in the city council to designate for young mental health. I mean, not only for older mental health, we need to designate a subcommittee, I hope that's our review, Mrs. Lynda Lee, to appoint, like, Eric Botcher, who is here, he's not a committee chair, I think he should, need to make a committee dedicated for young mental health. He's a millennial, I mean, he should lead that committee. Not only just for, I understand we got DYCD, a committee held by Alita Stephens, but the same time, we need to have a subcommittee dedicated only for millennials and Gen Z, and I believe that Eric Botcher would be the perfect person to lead that committee. I hope you have that in next year's budget. So, thank you. I gotta go downstairs for the rally.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Yeah. Downstairs rally. Yeah, yeah. Thank you, sorry about that. That's why I couldn't. Thank you.
All right. I think we're on. Hi. Good afternoon, and thank you Chairs Lee and Hudson for the opportunity to testify here today. My name is Kumari Cruz, and I am Director of our Public Education Program, as well as our Bereavement Services at Samaritans. In my role, I help to support those who have lost loved ones to suicide, and I help to train professionals across the city, including seniors, center staff, case managers, caregivers, on how to recognize and respond to suicide risk. We support intro 1257 because it brings long overdue attention to how agencies are or aren't serving older adults living with mental health or neurological conditions. Our team often hears from seniors who feel like they're falling through the cracks, they're misunderstood, overlooked, dismissed by the systems that aren't necessarily designed with them in mind. But the value of this bill lies not just in the data it gathers, but whether that information actually leads to meaningful change. That change depends on the genuine engagement with those who understand the realities on the ground. So our community-based organizations like ourselves, other dedicated caregivers, as well as the older adults themselves. These Resolutions 106A and 852 are also directly tied to suicide prevention. Financial security is a major driver for anxiety, fear, and distress, especially among older adults. This would help to protect against housing instability, which is a common trigger for crisis, while safeguarding Social Security benefits, ensuring that older New Yorkers can maintain not just financial stability, but a sense of dignity and independence. A person's worth does not diminish with age. We see oftentimes the misconception that aging and sadness are oftentimes going hand-in-hand with just the, you know, the, what was my turn? That it goes hand-in-hand with aging, depression. But every adult has a story. They have relationships and a right to support. Many of us feel, many of them tell us that they feel like a burden, that no one would notice if they're gone, that their pain is really just a part of getting old, and those are some of the huge misconceptions that we have to reject, and these bills help to do that. Every adult we speak to is a reminder that suicide prevention must extend across the lifespan. These proposed policies move us closer to that reality. Thank you again for your time.
Thank you.
Hello there. It's, my name is Fiona O'Grady, and I'm Director of Government Relations, working with Kumari at the Samaritans of New York. Chair Lee, thank you. You're very used to us coming to the Mental Health Committee for many years, but it's exciting, actually, to be here with Chair Hudson, and as the topic of aging and suicide is a very important one, and I think you have, some of the stats are in our therefore, they utilize more lethal means, and they also complete suicide much more than many other age groups. They're less likely to recover from an attempt. Older adults may exhibit passive help, self-harm behaviors, such as eating less, going out less, not doing things less. And so, the misconception also that aging and sadness and depression go hand-in-hand, you know, with aging, and as you've spoken all day, is a misnomer, and it reduces the likelihood of identifying risk, and we don't, or, or we assume that older adults, it's nearly okay, you know, there's a discussion around suicide and getting older, but there's also suicide prevention. So, both of these truths can be there, and we have to figure out where people are and to go to them, you know, to where they, what need they have. So, we strongly support Intro 1257ing, seven particularly for expanding eligibility for housing support and protecting social services. We also agree with the study proposed, but we do urge the council to ensure it not only is robust but actionable, and that you start to include the word suicide with these discussions around aging. You know, it is a myth, and it's a difficult word across all age groups, but I think especially for adults, because, you know, we think of them on their way to dying, therefore, it doesn't seem to be so bad with them to be suicidal, but that's actually another myth and a misconception. So, you all know us well, we're actually really pleased to be here with aging, and we'd love to interact. We, we did have some conversations with your legislative fellow during the budget hearings and et cetera. We would like to get closer to your staff and everything, and we will, over the summer and autumn.
That sounds good. Thank you. Thank you both so much.
Good afternoon.
Just press the button there at the bottom. Yep.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Chair Lee, Chair Hudson, I appreciate the opportunity to come before you. Although I have a personal testimony, I believe I speak for New York City correction officers, past, present, and the future, who were injured in the line of duty. It is an egregious ruling how the New York City Department treats officers that go in every day, put their life on the line, and they deny them full disability based on interaction, engagement, or altercation with an inmate. I, myself personally, was performing my duties as a New York City correction officer, and I suffered an injury, and I was denied full ability, pardon me, I was denied full disability based on, I believe arbitrary rulings, discriminatory rulings. I don't, I believe that correction officers, or they have a tough job, many people don't know what goes on inside. I worked in Rikers Island AMKC, which was the largest facility on Rikers Island, and correction officers, it's a thankless job. It's a thankless job. No one sees the ins and outs, and each day, we walk into that facility with a uniform, and we put our life on the line. A correction officer is always in the line of duty, from whether you're doing eight hours or sixteen hours. So, I believe it is totally unfair for the department to base a disability based on your engagement or, or interaction with an inmate. I, I beg of the committee to, to please look to somehow bring in legislation to change this, look at cases independently, because, again, I, I know when I came in in nineteen ninety-one, correction officers was primarily black and brown. And now, knowing these stipulations placed on them, I, I can in good faith tell any, anyone, hey, listen, it's a great job now. You know, you know, who, who wants to walk into a facility knowing that an inmate dictates your disability? And also, with that, with these rulings, you, you put correction officers, civilian staff, as well as inmates, in danger, because with these rulings, you're hesitant to act. And we know, in that environment, you, you have little time to act upon a situation. So, again, I, I thank you for hearing me. I believe this matter is important to all those officers who don, officers who don their uniform every day, and I believe I speak for many of them. I speak to officers daily, I have friends now, and it's just egregious knowing the difference between full disability and what we would say one-third disability is dependent on engagement with an inmate. Thank you. I appreciate your time.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Can we, yeah. Can we just get your contact information? You can come up to the table.
Right now?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
That way, we can just follow up with you directly. Please wait for your name to be called to testify, and please select unmute when prompted. Saif Alam.
You may begin.
Hi. Good afternoon, Chair Lee, Chair Hudson, and everyone in the committee. My name is Saif Alam, and I'm one of the civic leaders in Jamaica Hills, Queens, where I work closely with community members, advocacy groups, and local organizations to uplift voices of our most vulnerable neighbors, especially seniors, people with disabilities, and working-class families. I'm here today to raise deep concerns about the threats to Social Security, particularly following proposals from our current U.S. presidential administration that aim to cut or weaken this essential program. In Jamaica Hills, we have a significant senior population, many of whom are immigrants, retired public servants, essential workers, and caregivers. These residents rely on Social Security as their primary or only source of income. It covers their rent, medications, food, and transportation. There is no safety net beyond monthly check. If the federal government proceeds with any cuts to Social Security, our seniors in Queens, especially those in Jamaica Hills, will face real immediate harm. As costs of living rise and affordable housing become scarcer, any reduction in Social Security is not just unjust, it's dangerous. While Social Security is federally administered, I urge the city council to take a clear and focused stance. I respectfully ask you to pass a formal resolution condemning any federal to cut or prioritize Social Security. Increase city-level supports for older adults, including outreach to help them access their full benefits and housing protections. Fund legal and benefits advocacy programs so seniors, particularly immigrants and non-English speakers, are not left behind. And work with New York's congressional delegation to make the city's position clear. We will not accept cuts to a program that keep our communities afloat.
Time has expired.
Can you give me a few more minutes, two, one, thirty seconds to finish?
Thirty seconds, absolutely.
Our seniors build the city, they work in our cities, care for our families, pave the way for the governments that follow. As one of the civic leader in Queens, in Jamaica Hills, I feel a deep obligation to ensure we fight for their dignity, their security, and rightful place in our future. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today, and we look forward to working with the council to protect our neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you so much, and I'd like to also acknowledge that Councilmember Salam has joined the hearing. Okay, I want to call the next few names that have registered for questions, or for testimony, rather. Armando Rodriguez, Alex Stein, Gordon Lee, Dante Bravo. If any of you are online, please unmute yourselves, and we will begin the countdown. Okay. Seeing no one online, we would like to close the hearing. Thank you to everyone who's provided testimony today. This is such an important topic, especially as we see the older adult population increasing by forty percent in New York City here over the next fifteen years. And thank you again to Chair Lee for her steadfast partnership. This hearing is now adjourned.